We're going to call to order the Tuesday, September 15th regular meeting of the Cordera Town Council. So our first item here is to adjourn to closed session. I believe first I take a public comment on the closed session item, right Theresa? So this item is a conference with a real property negotiator. Is there any members of the public who would like to comment on this item? If so, please raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. We have no attendees on the line here. Rebecca, have we received any email public comment on this item?
We have not received any emailed public comments, but I think I should take roll first.
Oh, okay.
To get that. I don't think I technically have that on the agenda.
Okay, sure. Okay, let's do a roll call then.
Councilmember Casissa.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Avazia.
Here.
Vice Mayor Coonheart.
Here.
Mayor Beckman.
Here. Thank you Rebecca. Okay, now we will adjourn to closed session. So the council members are going to leave this Zoom and reconvene in a private Zoom. And we will come back here at 6:30 when it's time to resume the rest of our meeting. Thank you Rebecca. We are reconvening out of closed session. We have nothing to report. So we're going to resume now call to order the public portion of the September 15th Cordera Town Council meeting. Rebecca, can we have a roll call please?
Councilmember Casissa.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Avazia.
Here.
Vice Mayor Coonheart.
Here.
Mayor Beckman.
Here. Please join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everybody. Now it is open time for public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items that are not on the agenda. Members of the public will be given three minutes apiece to comment. If you would like to make a comment on an item that's not on our agenda, please raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. We will start with email comments to give folks a moment to raise their hand here. Rebecca, do we have any emailed public comments for open time?
We do not have any emailed public comments for open time.
Great, thank you. We will go to folks on the line who raised their hands and the first is Roy Wolford. Hi Roy.
Good evening. Going to comment on all ballot measures. So everyone must vote and every vote must count. It's Democrats' clarion call since the year 2000. Let's see how that all mail ballot worked in Marin County in 2007. Let's recall the council meeting from October 15th, 2019. Mr. Self-anointed touted the community coming together over a flood control district vote. That would be the Ross Valley Flood Control District's all mail ballot measure in 2007. He praised the people in the flood zone being in favor of the new property tax. He criticized the hill people for not being in favor of the tax. So what's the upshot of that election? This ballot was one vote per property irrespective of the total number of property owners. The vote date was June 25th, 2007. One strike against every vote must, everyone must vote and every vote must count. The instructions were poorly written in small print on the reverse side of the ballot, strike two. We were told there were 15,010 ballots mailed, total of 15 ballots mailed. Only 8,059 ballots were received, 6,951 ballots were unaccounted for. That's over 46% of the total ballots. What happened to them? No one knows. It's my experience, they were not mailed or delivered, strike three. 1,708 ballots were rejected. That's almost 21% of the ballots received. In a typical election, 1% of the ballots are rejected, strike four. Of the non-rejected ballots, 3,208 were marked yes. That was 65 more votes for yes than no. But wait, of the rejected ballots, 942 of the ballots were marked no. That's a total of 212 more votes for no than yes, strike five. So the no votes actually won the election. 4,085 ballots were marked no. That's over 27% of the total ballots, 147 more no votes than yes, strike six. On July 10th, 2007, the members of the Marin County Board of Supervisors acting as the flood control board held a public meeting to certify the vote. They heard from members of the public, including me, that the voting process was very flawed and should not be certified. Irrespective of this very flawed ballot vote process and without any discussion on the merits of the issue, the board summarily rejected the concerns and voted to certify the vote. Almost 79% did not vote yes. So much for a fair mail-in ballot voting process. This is clearly what happens when a state, county, city, and/or other municipalities and government agencies operate in group think mode. Strike seven, eight, and nine. In subsequent lawsuits, the court actually ruled the mail-voting process did not meet legal requirements before that.
Thank you Roy.
... by members of the.
Thank you Roy. Please feel free to email us the rest of your comments if you'd like us to see the whole thing. Thank you very much. There are no other hands up right now, so we're going to close open time and move on. There are no presentations, which brings us to the consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not need to be discussed again. Any members of the public can pull a consent calendar item or comment on the consent calendar. We will start by asking if any members of the council or staff would like to pull a consent calendar item. I know that staff plans to pull one and comment briefly on another.
Thank you Mayor Beckman and councilmembers. I would like to pull, can you, the item, there was a public comment on the item, I'm sorry, I don't have the item in front of me.
4B, I believe.
Yeah, related to the ordinance establishing a new approval process for town projects currently subject to Title 18 of the municipal code. And just, we did receive public comments, so if I may, I would just like to read the public comment. Don't have in front of me. And then provide a quick answer for the, for the council members.
And then Mr. Mayor, I also just want to pull item 4E, a quick strikeout on the addendums.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. And do any members of the council want to pull any other items? Nope? Okay, great. I think, Adam, did you find it?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
So with regards to that item that I had mentioned, we did receive a public comment from Peggy Burnett earlier today. Actually, it was yesterday evening. The public comment was, will the new process of approving town projects apply to non-building projects such as community gardens and dog parks? Also, will non-building town project, projects applications have to have an environmental impact study? And so with respect to the first part of the question, this goes back to the specific language of the ordinance that was introduced at the September 1st council meeting. And that ordinance defines a town project. So this town project means the construction or alteration of a structure on town-owned property. And so I think in the zoning ordinance, it's important to clarify that a structure means anything that is built or constructed and requires a location on the ground, including a building or edifice of any kind. So if those features, whether it's a garden, and I should say the structure also, one important note, a structure excludes a swimming pool installed that does not exceed three feet above the natural ground surface and not, also does not include a fence or a wall used as a fence, six feet or less in height. So if those town projects, such as a community garden or dog parks, have any sort of constructed features or meet any structures that meet the definition of what I just said in the zoning ordinance, those would have to go through the new town project process for review and approval of those town projects that was introduced by this ordinance on September 1st. And it really, so, you know, if the gardens are built of raised beds and are permanent structures such that you might maybe some benches or whatnot or other outdoor features for soil or what have you, those would be considered structures under the zoning ordinance today, just for example. And then also will non-building town projects applications have to have an environmental impact study? So any decision ultimately, whether it goes through the review process that was described on September 1st and introduced on September 1st, whether it goes through that process or there's another process at the town council, for example, a budgetary decision to move forward with a project has to, if it's a discretionary action and it meets the definition of a project under CEQA, it would be subject to the California Environmental Quality Act and the environmental review that is required pursuant to that law. And that's the best answer I can give you. It just, it depends whether or not it's defined as a, as a project first and foremost. And then when, whether or not there's exemptions that apply and so on. But we would take any of those decisions or any town projects, whether they're large structures or small structures through that same evaluation process.
So Adam, what you're saying is that this, this ordinance does not change how, does not change like CEQA requirements or anything? Okay, got it. Okay.
And Adam, may I clarify one point if I may, Mr. Mayor, one point with respect to the first question that was asked, that really the definition that you're using is the same definition that defines what town projects are currently subject to the zoning ordinance? So every, everything that is currently subject would essentially fall within that bucket, except for the one exception that we've defined.
Great, thank you Theresa. Okay, so I believe, I don't know that we actually pulled this item. I think Adam just commented briefly on it, so maybe we'll move on to 4E since that was pulled by staff. We'll take public comment on 4E, bring back to the council for a motion and then do the rest of the consent calendar. So I'm going to open up item 4E for public comment right now. That is resolution number 332020, authorizing the execution of leases with the, basically leasing the fire station to the fire department. If any member of the public would like to comment on this, please raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Hey Rebecca, for public comments, can we possibly get a timer up on the screen? I just feel like it's a little more transparent than me just using my phone.
Yes, I'm working on it, but in order to do that, I have to share my screen, which.
Oh, is that a pain?
When I tried, did a trial of that, the attendees who were reading from their screen then.
Got it. Okay. All right, maybe not there. Thank you. Anyways, there are no hands up, so we're going to close public comment on this item and bring 4E back to council for a motion or discussion and a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just really quickly, I'm requesting a strikeout. There are two addendums. There is an addendum attached to be both the Station 13 lease and the Station 14 lease. The strikeout that I'm requesting is on page one of each addendum. Paragraph one, line three, I'm requesting that you strike out the, the words dated August 27, 2020 for reference. So I'm just asking for a strikeout of the words dated August 27, 2020 for reference on both addendums. That's it.
Okay, I will entertain a motion on item 4E with the aforementioned strikeout.
So moved for approval.
Great, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you David. Rebecca, can we have a vote please?
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coonheart.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you. That's item 4E. We'll move on now to the balance of the consent calendar. Nobody else on council or staff wanted to pull an item, so we will turn this over to public comment for comment on the consent calendar or pulling another item from the consent calendar. If you'd like to do either, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom. Also email publiccomment@tcmail.org. I'm not seeing any hands go up, so we will close public comment and bring this back to the council. This is the balance of the consent calendar for discussion and a motion.
I'll move items 4A through 4G excluding 4E.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great, thank you Fred. Can we have a vote Rebecca?
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coonheart.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you. That concludes the consent calendar and brings us to item five, public hearings. Our only public hearing is 5A, which is consideration and possible introduction of ordinance number 1,000, an ordinance of the town of Cordera amending the, amending section 8.04.020 of ordinance number 984 to define leash length as not exceeding six feet in length and amending another section to designate a violation of the aforementioned section as an infraction rather than a misdemeanor. Is there a staff report?
Yes. So again, like Mayor Beckman said, consideration and possible introduction of ordinance number 1,000 and ordinance of the town of Cordera amending section 8.04.020 of ordinance number 984 to define leash length as not to exceed six feet in length and amending section 8.04.0.030 to designate violations of section 8.04.020 as an infraction. After our council, last council meeting on August 18th, the town manager and Parks and Recreation Director presented council with community feedback regarding dogs off-leash in town park. Council was asked to review and discuss the issues of dogs off-leash in town park and provide direction to staff as appropriate. And the four points that I represented as for discussion items were defining the leash length, defining whether dogs may access the waterway between Mohawk Avenue and Town Park, enforcing policies and fines, and public use of the easement along the east side of the creek behind the residence of Mohawk Avenue. And just to remind everyone that the council gave feedback and direction to staff regarding those four points as follows. Council supports staff recommendation to amend the ordinance to define the leash length as a maximum of six feet. That would be setting the maximum and being inconsistent, being consistent with the Marin County Code of Ordinances in three different sections. Staff recommends that council consider amending a section 8.04.020 of the Cordera Municipal Code, which currently requires that dogs on streets, sidewalks, and other public spaces be restrained by a leash to limit the maximum leash length to six feet. Staff also recommends that council consider amending section 8.04.030 to designate violations for that section as an infraction. This change will make the penalties of violation for section 8.04.020 consistent with those for the related offenses. In that section, it presents a form designated violations for 8.04.025, which is the prohibiting animals in parks except dogs in park areas identified by council resolution. And section 8.04.028 barring dogs from urinating or defecating on public property and requiring dog owners to clean up after the dogs defecate on public property as infractions. And that's the attachment one. The second point are just a quick note on that. There was also discussion initiated by a comment or suggestion by councilmember Casissa to restrict dog walking to paths through town park, and that's also something to continue discussion. Council, the second point was council supports restricting dog access to waterways between Mohawk Avenue and Town Park. Staff recommends council delay action on this issue to see if setting the maximum leash length addresses issues with dog accessing said area. Should the issues continue, staff can present council with legislative options to address the problem at a future meeting. And based on further review on a site visit, staff also suggests that the further discussion regarding public access to that area, the easement between the Larkspur-Cordera School District, staff at Neil Cummins Elementary School, and the adjacent residence, as all are potentially impacted with increased traffic to that area. And a couple of staff notes regarding that is that initial comment, conversation with Neil Cummins staff is that they're possibly in support of any kind of path that would circumvent public around the school grounds, especially when school is in session. So that's something for council to consider. The third point, council supports making enforcement policies and fines consistent with those of the city of Larkspur and the town of San Anselmo, as they let the town receive police services from Central Marin Police Authority. It would also note that that be consistent with the Marin County where possible. The town might create a tiered rate of fines that escalate based on repeated infractions. But to note, the staff says that adding the tiered rate of fines would be inconsistent, would be consistent with Marin County but inconsistent with our neighboring cities, Larkspur and San Anselmo. That the current town bail forfeiture schedule of violations of section 8.04.020 are consistent with the bail forfeiture schedule for one, leash law violations of the city of Larkspur and two violations of the Marin County ordinances also adopted by San Anselmo, barring dogs from running at large on public and private lands, requiring the dogs be under immediate control of responsible person. But the bail forfeiture amounts for a violation of the Marin County's leash law sections listed here are significantly higher. In addition, the bail forfeitures require for leash law violations in Marin County parks and its open space districts are listed in separate appendices. Are tiered, such as the forfeiture amount increased significantly for the second and third violations. And the fourth point was the council were, will consider resident feedback regarding public use of the easement along the east side of the creek behind the residence of Mohawk Avenue prior to providing staff with direction. And staff has received informal feedback regarding public access to the easement along the east side of the creek from the residences. And upon further review, staff has concluded that the issue of accessing should be discussed among the town, Larkspur-Cordera School District, the property owners, as the path impacts all parties and the discussion should include an assessment of risk and maintenance responsibilities. And as directed by the town council at the last meeting on August 18th, staff has conducted additional research related to those four points discussed above and recommends the following action and additional discussion tonight. Staff recommends council, one, consider and introduce ordinance number 1,000, an ordinance of the town council to amending sections 8.04.020, ordinance number 984, to define leash length as not to exceed six feet in length and amending section 8.04.030 to designate violations of this, of that section as an infraction, attachment A. Staff also recommends the following additional discussion and consideration. Discussion possible, discuss possible direction to staff to monitor the situation regarding dogs accessing the waterway between Mohawk Avenue and Town Park and to begin discussions regarding public access to the easement with Larkspur-Cordera School District, staff at Neil Cummins Elementary School, and adjacent residents. Two, consider and discuss directing staff to perform or research on fines, on fines or leash law violations to ensure that the town's fines are consistent, consistent with those that are neighboring jurisdictions and make a recommendation to council at a future meeting that includes a tiered fine schedule with escalating rates. And three, provide additional direction to staff as you see appropriate.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I can add on Ashley's great report and staff report and all of her follow-up, I thought she was very thoughtful in how she summarized basically all the feedback from the last council meeting. So I just, I want, I want the mayor, the council, and the public to know how your town manager and staff is approaching this problem. One, enforcement has always been a big issue for us, education and enforcement. We talk about it on all of our ordinances. I think we all agree that we don't want Central Marin Police Authority spending five hours a day enforcing poop violations and leash violations. I know that Ashley worded it way better than I could, but I just, it's completely ridiculous that we're talking about this, but we are. And so, you know, like I said before, if we're talking about this, I think we've won as a town because there's much greater things at issue for us to keep the lights on in our town. So one of the things that comes with this is we're approaching this twofold. One, we really think, we didn't come up with the six-foot leash law. Marin County did with a lot of thought. A lot of the cities and towns rely on the county for their thoughtfulness and research and recommendations. We think it's appropriate to mirror them and their recommendations on six feet. By doing that, we think it accomplishes a lot of things. One, it keeps, it keeps dogs under the control. If a dog defecates, they're not defecating 50 feet away chasing a ball. They're defecating in front of their owner, who then is responsible to clean it up. The second piece is it keeps dogs out of the waterways. I think everybody on this call in the community that has listened to the council is very clear that the council does not want dogs swimming in the water. And so I think a six-foot leash actually solves that problem. I always believe instead of promoting and passing new laws, we should start small and work our way up and be more restrictive as we go, not the other way. And also help us, your town staff, enforce these laws because if we're going to pass them, we need to enforce them. And so I think the six-foot leash law requirement really solves a lot of our problems. It puts the ownership back on our residents and the community. Secondly, though, we've done a lot of education and it continues, but we need enforcement. And so tied to this conversation and based on another business item that you'll hear in a little bit, my recommendation to the council at the end of this meeting, and I'll come back to you at the next meeting, is to basically take, use Central Marin Police Authority as a backup to our ordinances. But in situations like we're talking about tonight and the noise ordinance, is to have code enforcement enforce it. And so I'm going to ask for $100,000 budget amendment to have Mike Moriarty, our code enforcement officer, be promoted up to oversee code enforcement in our town seven days a week and have part-time employees, both on contract and part-time, to really enforce our regulations seven days a week. And so anything that we pass here, it's not going to do any good without the enforcement. And so I think we hear the council's frustration and the community's frustration over the past few years. We share it. I hope you hear it in my tone because I mean it. That's my intent. I believe we can do it within our budget. And I recognize that we need to do it consistently and seven days a week. And so anything that you think about passing tonight, it is, it is with that recommendation of having a really robust code enforcement infrastructure in place. If we do that over the next couple of weeks, Mr. Moriarty would oversee that program. He would actually have to come back to you with the help of town, the town attorney to amend some of our practices within our ordinances so they have teeth and process, process in place for our town staff to issue those citations. And another example, think about it, like a code enforcement violation. If we red-tag you and stop that work, we have to actually come back and confirm it and do it every day. And it's an example of, no, you're in violation. You don't get to continue until you correct the issue. And so there's a lot of issues within our ordinance from a code enforcement standpoint at a high level, at Mike's level, that we're going to have to come back to you and amend. So two-step process right now of recommendations, leash law, we came to it with a length based on Marin County coupled with a really robust and aggressive code enforcement infrastructure. That's our recommendation. The second piece is, and we could talk about it tonight, council felt pretty strongly at the last meeting and it's whatever you want, council. But it's, I recommend we start there. If we continue to have a problem with dogs defecating in the park and we're having issues and confrontations, we can come back to council in one meeting and add two sentences to the resolution banning dogs from, you know, keeping owners on the pathways when they're walking their dogs. And we can come back to you really quickly and do that. I'll tell you that I don't think we want to do that, but if we have to do that, we can do it in one meeting and two sentences. The third piece, and Ashley touched on it, is we are not positioned at all to even have a conversation about the easement. It's a multi-owner conversation. It is really not about dogs off a leash. It's more about access, liability, and safety and noise. And so those will be the four components. We will come back to you and like Ashley said, working with the school district, every resident along that corridor and that easement actually has a back gate to the easement. Access is actually restricted on the Neil Cummins side. Something to think about, and Neil Cummins will have to strongly think about it, is if you open that to the community, that crossing then becomes a big liability. And so there's a lot of steps that they'll have to take to make this, the pathway safe, be responsible for any injuries on that pathway and make that crossing safe. There, and like Ashley said, they're interested preliminarily in that conversation, and so we're going to help them with that. And again, we probably have talked to about 30% of the residents along that back corridor. We'll continue to, and a lot of them are on the call now and have provided feedback to. Again, it's just a different conversation, but we know it's one that we'll bring back to the council. It's also a much bigger conversation if you think about the, the shared easements along, as you go up, out to hill. It's the same conversation council had a few years ago. We have some on, I believe, that back up to the park as well. We have a couple of neighborhoods that we're going to want to be thoughtful as a public policy decision related to the easements and the pathways. So that'll come back to you. Lastly, the waterway is not considered part of the parkland, so we can't restrict it by resolution. We would have to amend the ordinance. So it's something we can certainly do if you feel strongly tonight that you want to restrict dogs swimming in the waterway. We can do that by, by the ordinance. It's a two-step process, and so we would need that feedback from you tonight. Again, I think we should start with, start with the leash length and see where we go from there. But again, if that's your wish, we can certainly do it. I would also ask you to consider if you want to restrict the waterway, do it to Town Park only and let us continue to consider all the other marshlands and waterways in town. I just think there's a lot of moving parts there that I would really like to consider before we make a decision and actually cause a disaster from an enforcement standpoint and a public policy perspective. So those are my thoughts. Thank you. We're happy to answer any questions.
Hey Todd, you had mentioned to me earlier today on the phone that, I think you mentioned efficient game regulation. Hey Todd, you had mentioned to me earlier today on the phone that I think you mentioned efficient game regulation that says. You know, basically that you can't have dogs in, in wetlands. So does that already kind of cover our base there and, and take care of that issue?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was mistaken in the code. It defers to our own rules and regulations. So.
Got it.
Yeah. So I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
I had acknowledged that my connection during this actual discussion of the last meeting was not very good, but. I thought I heard that we assumed that the issue of dogs in the water would be taken care of, not only by the six foot length, but also by. Recommending the dog owners track along pathways. And those two things together would work to keep dogs out of the water essentially. Did I miss that or did I mishear that? Or have there been a number of dog owners who have pleaded with the, for the right to, let's say, walk their dogs across the soccer fields?
Yeah, you're correct, Mr. Vice Mayor. The council was pretty much five oh and on exactly what you just said. I think that was how you felt. You felt pretty strongly. I think there was some frustration on the council and so that's correct. What I'll tell you. Again, we are prepared to add that to the resolution tonight. It's adding a sentence and we can do that. What I'm asking for consideration and you know, when you start to look at consistency with San Anselmo and Larkspur. As well, you know, we're adding these, these little tweaks that. That might be necessary, but they're not consistent with the others and it does cause enforcement issues. I mean, it's a, it's an interesting. You have a leash law, but it's an interesting law that it, you know how long it'll take to educate the community on that? And then from an enforcement standpoint, how it, it's just, it causes problems. It's one that we may have to do. It's one the council may decide five oh. I think you're five oh consistent last meeting. And so that's fine. I'm asking for a little bit of consideration to do it in a two step process. I think the leash length solves the problem and if I'm wrong, I'll own it and come back to you. For as soon as possible with adding two sentences. But again, the council was strong and you are completely accurate in how you heard that last meeting. So we hear you about it clearly.
Thank you.
Fred?
Yeah, I'm sorry. My internet cut out also, so I missed part of that. So I had two things. One thing was if you heard any more complaints since our last meeting or is it kind of curtailed off? That's part one.
Todd, did you hear his question? I think he was asking if there was any more complaints.
In the fields. I just don't.
Hey Fred, you cut out after you finished question one.
Sorry, am I back?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Sorry about that. Question, I'm sorry, part two was, yeah, I was understanding that we're going to have them on paths only. My concern is when you have people cutting across the fields and those fields are pretty big in Town Park. That you're going to have dogs doing their business when they're out there, which could create problems for people that just want to go out there and play. And the other part is I think it's more tempting for people to take their dogs off leash if they're in the middle of the field out there. I just think it's a temptation thing.
To your both points, I think it's, yes, we're still getting complaints and you know, this conversation is a 50 50. There's that 50% of the other side of this conversation that are like, hey, don't. Don't hurt, you know, the, all the good, like one or two people, you know. Now you restrict the rest of us and impact the rest of us. And so it's a tough one. Again, what I've seen and I've gone out there and I think you all have, we all have. I just saw the other day of, you know, someone that has their dog under the control of a six foot leash and their dog defecates in the grass. Nine times out of 10, they're probably going to pick it up, right? And so, but we want 100% consistency. So it's not perfect. The other side of it though is when you have your dog not under the control and you're throwing the ball out 50 feet away and they defecate in the park. Nine times out of 10, they're not going out there to pick it up. And so controlling. Strong control of your dog, whether on the grass or on the pathway, it seems consistent and then talking to other jurisdictions. As like a really good, strong first step. The question is, do you want to restrict them to the pathways? It's 50 50. You're going to hear from the community. It's just not what it is.
Yeah. So to follow up on Fred's question for you, Todd. You know, initially we were talking about things that made sense to us and we were talking through as a council that we agreed that it deferred to more research, right? And what I'm hearing and just for your clarification. Even if they're in the middle of the park and they're off, but the, and they're on a six foot leash, if they defecate and they leave it, right, which is the real. Kind of concern, it's actually, that in itself is also punishable. Like fine, right? So that is also being dealt with. Currently and would be enforced, right? Is that correct? And so that's why you think that between those two things, it's not just the leash, it's between those two that it would eliminate any of the concerns that were involved with that.
That's correct. And the, and the third piece of it is enforcement. You have to have enforcement. Central Marine Police Authority will never be positioned to enforce it. We're actually to start this, if, if the council approves my recommendation at the next meeting. It would be, I'm going to put someone out in Town Park and Co. Park and our parks to, to be out there.
So Todd, that was one thing that I was going to ask, because if we're also talking about switching for enforcement of these types of issues. From CNPA to, you know, to town staff. That does kind of negate the need for us to be strictly in, you know, strictly like matching up with, with Santa Elmo and Larkspur, right? Because the only reason we try and match with them is, is on issues where our shared police service is enforcing. So that's true, right? Okay.
That's absolutely true. And when you get to the fee conversation, I just want you to know, once we update our fee schedule. It's on the citation pad. So all the fees don't have to be consistent between the jurisdictions. And honestly, they're usually not. And so that's, that should not be a hindrance to council. I think council member Casissa brought it up at the last meeting. I strongly encourage a nice first, you know, amount of fine. And then it increases substantially for each violation after. And so we should absolutely consider that. And so we shouldn't worry about being consistent with the others on that.
Okay. Ashley, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, part of, I just wanted to clarify that part of my intention on my recommendations on the last page, the staff report on two B, on two A was. Related to performing more research with our neighbors is to see whether they're having consistent issues that we're having and whether they're considering making a change. Because if we say lead a change and make a recommendation, it might be something that they would want to follow suit with.
Sure. Thank you. Any other questions from council before we open this up to public comment? No? Okay. Then we're going to go ahead and turn this over to the public. Anyone on the line, if you would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. We'll start with email public comments to give folks on the line a second here to raise their hands. Rebecca, do we have any emailed public comments on this item?
We did receive several emailed public comments, but they were all from people who are in attendance at the meeting currently. So I may wait and see who speaks. I was also going to try, I added myself as public comment and I can turn on my camera and try holding up. The timer on my phone and see if that works. That's what other jurisdictions have, have done.
Okay.
I don't know if it'll work in this case, but it may be worth a trial run.
All right, we can test it out. In that case, we will take public comment from the audience right now. So we will start with Lucinda and then go to James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I fully approve of the restrictions that we're trying to do with regard to controlling our. And, and I do believe that a leash law is, is very necessary. I do want to ask for an extension, excuse me, on the length. I do have a, an extender leash myself that I bought at the pet club. And, and I like it very much because it gives me a little bit of space with my dog and a little bit of extra running time with him. From me, but I always am conscious of what he's doing and, and he needs to pick up after him. Is of course a requirement, but. Six feet is very limiting and I, I didn't realize that that was what the county had, but it's extremely limiting. I just think we need to allow for the 14 to 16 foot. Extender leashes to make it more amenable to us dog walkers. I do agree that we should stay on the paths. As a matter of fact, I thought that was the rule. So I was surprised to learn that people were okay to walk across the field. I think that they need to stay on the path and they need to be able to. Minimize the defecation. And, and the smells thereof to very close to the path. And, and I think now that we have a dog park, we don't need to have a, somebody throwing a ball in the park for a dog to chase. I totally disagree with anybody that thinks that that is okay. That's all I have. Just please extend the, the six foot length to include. The, the extender leashes and, and up to a hundred feet is absolutely ridiculous. So let's, let's be responsible, but. A little bit more lenient. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lucinda. We will go to James next and then Courtney. Rebecca, if it's easy for you, maybe you just put it up when they hit like 30 seconds or something. I don't know. Just a thought. But whatever, whatever you prefer. All right. Next up is going to be James.
Good evening. Good to see you again. Thanks for all your hard work on behalf of our town. So I recalled the meeting of August 18th, that there was a discussion of a six foot. Leash, but tied to that was also the dogs were going to be required to be only on the paved paths. And I was surprised to see that seems to have been eliminated from a consideration. And I wondered why that the comments have partly explained that. And the second topic about the dog use of the low canal. I recalled from that August 18th meeting that the decision was that the dogs would not be allowed in, in the canal. Now, if the dogs are still allowed to be on the grassy areas, then they're still going to be near the canal. And I don't think the six foot leash requirement is going to solve the problem because we've seen the creativity of some of the dog owners. What will happen is that they'll be on the edge of the canal and the dog will be swimming six feet out. And some of them will have retractable leashes and so the dog's going to be swimming further out. So as long as the dogs are permitted anywhere in the park on a six foot leash. It cannot solve the problem with the dogs swimming in the canal because the dogs are going to continue to do that. And on the topic of the public easement, I recalled there were two options discussed at the last meeting. One was to allow public use with dogs on leash as at present with the north end of that path blocked. And the second option was to restrict use of, to only the houses that back onto the path. I don't recall much of any discussion about opening the north end of that path for public use. And I'm wondering if there's, what's happening that there may be interest in doing that. I think it's a good idea to involve Neil Cummins School. And I think if you survey the property owners along that path, the resounding consensus of opinion is going to be no, do not open that. Gate at the north end of the path. The Town Park today compared to a year ago due to the virus pandemic and the new dog park is very disrupted. Thirty five years ago or more, it was decided residents in the town that, that access to that path would. Not be allowed beyond that gate at the north end and. As a resident, the one thin line we have separating us from all the activity in the park presently. Is that path and that people can't go through that path. If it's open for access at that north end. Those problems in the park are going to be right outside our back gates. And there are issues at, at that north end. If you do open it, it opens onto the driveway. There's a blind.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry about that. We're all limited to three minutes here. Next is going to be Courtney and then Joel.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. I too agree with Lucinda. I think, and my feedback is specifically on point one, the leash length limitation proposal. I think that realistically, people aren't walking and playing fetch with their dogs on 50 foot leashes. And therefore restricting down to a six foot leash isn't really going to hit the root cause of the issue. I think the root cause is dogs not on leash at all. And people who are irresponsible pet owners not picking up after their pets. And so I would instead encourage, you know, if we are going to propose that we spend more money on enforcement, that we try that first. And see how that works before we start to throw other restrictions on pet owners that may or may not actually. Hit the root cause of the issue itself. And so that's really all I have to say. I, I agree that six feet is, you know, is very short length. I have two dogs myself and one is a little faster than the other and I end up, you know, always having to. Keep one playing catch up with me while the other ones, you know, able to sniff a little bit more and then run and catch up. And so I do appreciate having a little extra distance myself. And, you know, even a, you know, a 15 to 20 foot length, as Lucinda said, does keep. My dogs within my control and I'm able to see where they go to the bathroom and responsibly pick up after them and, and maintain their control. So that's all I have to say and thank you so much for, for listening.
Great. Thank you very much, Courtney. Next up is going to be Joel.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. I first want to thank the town council and the Park and Rec Commission for taking the time to evaluate this and then do so fairly and hear all sides. I'm very happy to hear about the plan for making Mike Moriarty a full time enforcement officer. I think that will definitely help things. I, I do want to point out a couple of concerns. Living where I do along Mohawk and backing up to the low canal. It is a bit of a hidden part of Town Park. And so that berm that exists on the side of the east field. Allows people to throw their ball unrestricted and unseen by officers who drive through. The, the parking lot of Neil Cummins or the Cafe Veride parking lot. And so they feel very protected and feel very emboldened to take their dog off leash and do whatever they want. The same is true with the East Canal path. This, this backs up to our fence lines. And literally every day, at least five people will walk their dogs off leash on that path. And there's no enforcement because nobody really sees it. And it's not part of Corridor Madera Town Park, as you pointed out earlier. So I'm not sure how we'll enforce that going forward. Lastly, I, I do want to point out maybe an opportunity to shut down the activity of dogs in the canal. In a, in Ashley's reference to some of the Marin County codes. You point out county code 10.06.010. And that states that no dogs are allowed or any other animal to enter environmentally sensitive or restricted areas. And I don't know what it would take for the town council or the Park and Rec Commission. To designate that as an environmentally sensitive or restricted area, that might solve it. My biggest concern in this whole thing is keeping the dogs out of the canal and away from the canal. And, and the means by which we do that, I'm not so concerned with. So thank you for listening.
Great. Thank you, Joel. We don't have any other hands up at this time, so we'll turn now to the emailed public comments from folks who have not had a chance to speak here in person.
The only emailed public comments we received were from attendees who commented.
Great. Fantastic. In that case, there are no other hands up. So we will close public comment and bring this back to the council for discussion and a motion. Who would like to start us off? Fred?
Yeah. My two cents is, is I understand thinking about a longer leash. I, my dog is always on six foot, six foot leash. I don't have a pound with a leash. I'll just say it that way. I think though we still need to restrict dogs to the pass. Because if we do go to a longer leash, I can see people walking out to the canal and still having dogs in the canal with, on a longer leash. So I think the only way we resolve is. Cutting dogs from that canal is to keep them on paths. That's just my two cents for now. I may have additional comments.
Thanks, Fred. Charles?
So I also heard and respect individuals kind of needs for their animals, but I think that's. But I think that six feet is the county level kind of ordinance. And that's what the decision was based on. It wasn't about a specific town issue. And I also can use a six-foot leash. And so I don't have a problem with that. I think that kind of brings it in coherence with other jurisdictions. So I'm fine with that. I don't think we should restrict it to pass only. I believe in staff's report that between that and the defecation fines that that won't be a problem. So I'd like to not add this at this time and respect the town manager's request that if it continues after we pass this ordinance, that we revisit it instead of inflicting more regulation and what is seen as a code enforcement issue currently. I also heard about, you know, that ultimately what's decided in that easement should be a different discussion. While I like creative thinking about it, I do worry about what that canal really is and how it's designated to basically deal with a dog issue when really it's a land issue. You know, it's about water and stormwater and a lot of other things that ultimately we need the flexibility to do what we need to do with that water system. So I wouldn't want to make it something that it isn't. Just as a, you know, there's a lot of reasons. Ultimately, Mohawk, a lot of the foundations are giving. And so I think attention to what that canal is and how the water and the ground there is dealt with should be flexible and not, you know, have the dog chase its tail. So the, I think that ultimately I can just pass the ordinance for the six-foot. And I think that takes care of all the problems. I do think that, you know, the flex, like, you know, the fines and everything coming back and the further discussion of Moriarty, you know, I'm aware of what those are. And I also think that that would be really good and solve the rest of the problems. So I think that that's all ultimately we're being asked to consider right now. So, yeah. So I would put, I could definitely push, put forward the ordinance as it's currently suggested by staff.
Okay, thanks. David?
I too agree with Charles and I like the sensitive, thoughtful, open-eared approach of staff on this issue. Keep your ears open.
All right. Thank you. Bob, do you have anything to say?
I would largely agree with what Charles said as well, but let's just keep a really close eye on this, especially the canal issue. We have got to make sure dogs stay out of the canal. And if that means keeping them on the pass, whatever we need to do, we need to do that. So let's just watch that really, really closely. There are huge environmental issues being caused by dogs in the canal. We need to watch that. And but I'll go with staff's recommendation, you know, if that's, this is what you guys want to do and this is how you want to approach it, let's try it. Let's see if it works, but let's keep an eye on it. Thanks.
Yeah, I agree with that. I'm, so Todd, you were saying that you're, you kind of are hesitant about rushing into making some sort of regulation on dogs in this canal without doing something holistically that that covers all of our wetlands. Is that, did I understand that right?
Yeah. So let me, thank you for the opportunity to answer that. The first one is again, I believe in a two-step process with the pathway conversation. As it relates to the waterway, I think the council's unanimous and I think what we're hearing from the community is pretty consistent as well. We want to keep dogs out of the waterway. It's a question for Teresa from a legal standpoint, but I believe we have to amend the ordinance. And I'm completely supportive and I see no reason why we can't do it now. Amend the, because it's not a parkway, so we can't do it. It's not parkland, so we can't do it by resolution. We have to amend the ordinance. But the question for Teresa is what do we have to do now to amend the ordinance to restrict people from swimming in the, or dogs from swimming in the waterway? I just ask that we be specific to Town Park, this specific area for this ordinance at this point. I just, because staff hasn't really had time to thoughtfully think about the town in its entirety. And there's certain situations, it may seem like a no-brainer, but I just want to be careful on that. So as it relates to this, this specific waterway, I think everybody is saying the same thing. I'm fine with it. I support it. It's just a legal question for Teresa on how we quickly do that. I answered your question.
So thank you, Todd. We could definitely amend the ordinance to add a provision that would preclude dogs from being in the waterway in this one area. I'm, I think I am going to look to the town manager's tolerance for this. I think the cleanest way would be for us to bring it back with that amendment in there. I know usually you don't put an introduction of an ordinance on your consent calendar, but since you did have a full discussion here and the only addition would be really adding a provision to make that operative, I think that it could go on the consent calendar. Of course, it can be pulled off if you change your mind. And so that may be one way to, to have our cake and eat it too. It does slow us down by a couple of weeks in getting this into effect. Otherwise, I would see, need to sit here and draft an amendment. And we would need to figure out where to put it, what section to put it in. So if you want, I can draft something on the fly to keep us on schedule. Or we can go ahead and bring it back and, and have that amendment move forward. So I guess the tolerant, the question is how, how quickly do we want to get this into effect?
I mean, is there a way just from a, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question to?
Yeah, please.
Teresa, is there a way to, for the council, if they want to do this, to give us to stay on track, to give us direction? You know, general direction and the, the ability to draft something and throw it, stay on track and put it on the next meeting?
So what I would, what I would say is I think if you just take the next item, I will have something for you and you can come back to this item. So if you want to just hold on this. And I'd like the ability to consult, which I will do offline with Rebecca in terms of placement and numbering. So I can get it drafted for you. I just need more than probably one minute.
That's fantastic. So we will come back to this after we conclude the business items and before the council reports. I just want to wrap up our discussion here on all the points so that when we come back to it, all we have to do is, is take a motion on the amended ordinance. So a couple of points that I just wanted to raise. Mr. Jordan was concerned that keeping dogs on paths has been eliminated from consideration. And I just wanted to clarify that I think we're all endorsing a two-step process here where we're saying we're not going to do it right now, but we are going to very much keep a close eye on what happens. So it's very much still under consideration. And the whole point is to watch the reality on the ground going forward once we start making these regulatory changes and see if that solves the problem. And then if it doesn't, to come back and add in that next step. That was one thing that I wanted to clarify. I was going to ask Todd about a timeframe for like a, like a comprehensive dogs in wetland policy. But I think given that we can just amend this ordinance tonight and restrict it to Town Park, that's not really an important question. So the only other thing that I really wanted to discuss was the, the extender leashes, I feel like has the potential to become just like a bad little thorn in our sides. Because I feel like extender leashes are pretty common. I don't know what the typical lengths are. I feel like, I don't know, it's probably like 10, 12, 14 feet. But, you know, like a lot of folks have those and I don't think they're particularly egregious. But, but what I would hate to see is for like, you know, somebody out walking their dog and they've got their leash extended to seven feet or eight feet. And then, you know, somebody freak out and, and, you know, try and stick code enforcement on them. So I don't know how we deal with that, but it just, I, I, I just like, I'm concerned that we're setting ourselves up for like a crazy kind of enforcement situation there. But what do you guys think? David?
I brought this up last meeting in August because I always used extender leases when I had dogs myself. And I thought that the answer, they came back was, well, a normal commercially available extender leash can easily be retracted to six feet. So it's, it's just a part of the definition of a six-foot leash. And we should try to be consistent with the county and with other jurisdictions and leave it at that. So, so an extender leash is a six-foot leash in effect.
Yeah, Todd?
I think it's always going to come down to a foot, right? It's always a foot more, a foot more. And what I'll tell you is there's the spirit of the law and the letter of the law. And I can't tell, I can't honestly, I can't ascertain a situation where it's going to come down to, oh, that was seven feet or six and a half feet. Here's your citation, right? It's our philosophy as a town staff. If anyone is questioning that, I mean, what are we talking about? I think you need to start somewhere. And I think instead of us, you know, we're not listening to our entire community, right? We have a handful of people. We're all trying to be thoughtful in this conversation. I appreciate it. And I think we have to go off some basis and some standard that we all really rely on as a county. And that's really the county ordinance, you know? And so I think it's a good place to start. You know, if we, again, if we start to have issues, we're going to have to talk about this more. And I hope we don't, but it's always going to come down to a foot up. If it's, if we, you know, and I was hearing the conversation, I'm like, maybe we go to eight feet. But then it's going to be, well, I need 10 to 12 and then 15. And if you look at the issues we've had specifically in our complaints in these letters, you're having issues where 10 to 15 feet are becoming, those are becoming issues. We've had issues. We've had dog attacks, dog bites. We've had a lot of problems with it. And so it's just, that's what we have as facts. And we're trying to, you know, reel that back a little bit. So that would be my comment on that.
So I think what I'm hearing you say is that even if we pass this ordinance with a, with a six-foot leash limit tonight, responsible dog owners in Corder Madera who do use an extender leash and may, you know, may let their dog go and, you know, sniff on this extender leash, shouldn't worry too much about any sort of crazy penal enforcement?
Yeah. So here, here, I'll walk you through how we do it. So code enforcement. So we have Mike Moriarty who's on the call and myself, and we're talking to our staff. And we're saying, here's the leash law violation. Here's, here's the corpus delecti of the, of the violation, right? At six feet, really something that we're going to educate our staff on and we do is control. Do they have control of the dog? And so let's say it's seven feet. We end up at the end of the day measuring and it's seven feet, it's a violation. But in the situation of whatever happened, were they under the control and was it within reason, right? It's the spirit of the law, the letter of the law. And the answer is yes. I can tell you 10 times out of 10 times, our expectation is not to issue a citation. And if the complaint comes back to me in that situation, then I'll tell you probably 10 times out of 10 times, Mike and I are going to take that citation back. So that's how we're going to educate our people. That's how we approach it. But we're trying to get control and we're trying to use some standard that just your staff just didn't make up out of thin air that we can look back on and go, we rely on this entity to provide that direction for us based on their vast experience. And it's the county of, you know, Marin. So that's what I can tell you. And that's how we're going to train our staff, you know, go on the record of saying that.
Yeah, that's a very reasonable interpretation.
Tape measures, you know?
Right, right. No, that's all I needed to hear. That's all I needed to hear. Bob?
So we're not going to have enforcement officers in unmarked cars walking around the neighborhoods with tape measures looking for people? Is that what you're saying?
I hope not. I hope you don't make me do that.
Not planning to, just wanted to check. I think that's what you're saying. It's an enforcement issue. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Great. With that, I don't have anything else that I wanted to discuss on this item. So I'm ready to move on to our business items and come back to this once Teresa has an amendment for us. Does anybody else have anything they want to say on this before we move on? Okay, then we will table item 5A and move on to our business items, starting with 6A, which is consideration and possible action to approve resolution number 282020, extending the lapse date for certain types of entitlements by 180 days due to COVID-19 delays. Charles?
I am going to turn off my video and excuse myself from this because of personal involvement with this decision.
Great. Thank you, Charles. All right, Todd and Adam, whenever you guys are ready.
I'm sorry, I was struggling to hit my mute button. So I am just going to, for Council member Lee, I'm going to say it. It's a personal decision based on an entitlement that he already has. The Political Reform Act requires a little bit more disclosure, so I have just done that for him.
Thank you. Great. I also agree with that.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just want to start off with, this item is being brought back to you at my direction. It's not one that I take lightly. And I kind of want to just briefly give you in the, in the community, a reason why I'm bringing this back. And, you know, staff has considered the information that we presented to you on July 7, 2020. The questions raised by the town council at that meeting and the evolving impact of COVID-19 pandemic on the Corder Madera community since July, we believe a continuation of discussion of this item is important at this time. In particular, staff and the town manager believe that further clarity regarding the town's permit lapse provisions, the town's regulatory policies during the first months of the pandemic and the number of permits that would be affected by this policy. And the actions taken by other local jurisdictions may benefit the town council in its decision-making process. And so again, when this was brought to you in July, it really came down to a single project. And hindsight, if I had hindsight and knew how the discussion was going to go, I would have done this much sooner. And so I apologize for that. But I want to set the council up for success the best I can. Again, it was a two-two vote. And I think, you know, there is new information, but there's information that should be provided that this really isn't about a single project. You currently have approximately 30 projects that could come into play as we move forward based on this policy that is decided by the council. And again, the two-two vote was a no action. And so we weren't able to clarify this. And I just think it's really important. And so staff will take that responsibility. I asked the town attorney and Adam Wolf, our planning and building director, to really kind of step back and take the conversation we had on July 7th, consider the concerns that we want to make sure that we, we bring forward to the council that this isn't really about a single project. It's a policy decision town-wide that currently could affect up to 30, you know, plus applications. And to try to provide that information in a way that you're positioned at the dais to, to consider and, and hopefully make a decision one way or the other. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Adam and we're happy to answer any questions as we go through.
Thanks, Todd, and hello again, council members. So to Todd's point, I wanted to just, I thought it was a good idea just to briefly go over the proposal that we have in front of you. And there is a resolution that is attached to your staff report tonight. And again, this proposal, and I'll get into this, is to extend permit lapse provisions that exist in the Corder Madera municipal code by 180 days is what we're proposing now. And that 180, 80 days, just to get that out of the way, is really a change. We were talking about 120 days before, but since that was about two months ago, we extended that by about 60, well, by 60 days, which is about the amount of time that has lapsed since discussing this issue on, in, in early July. And after doing some additional research also, it's actually the same amount of time. Not that it's, you know, but I thought it was helpful to note that it's the same amount of time that when Sausalito also had a permit lapse extension policy adopted in early June, it was also for 180 days and that applied to a variety of discretionary permits that some, very similar to what we're talking about here tonight. So and then I did want to provide some clarity on some of the information that was provided by staff at the July 7th meeting. I think the council, several council members had some really good questions. And I think it's important, I wanted to try to bring some clarity to some of those questions that were raised at that meeting and focusing on those. But just to start again and provide some background about what we're talking about this evening. There are several, well, I'll just say, you know, extension to the permit lapse provisions really would allow additional time for individuals who or applicants who have received permits, granted permits or planning entitlements to either obtain a building permit or commence construction. And those are the things that are required in order to toll the expiration of a, of a permit. And/or would allow additional time for a permit holder to file an extension to their existing permit. So as we discussed at the July 7th meeting, the Corder Madera municipal code includes several permit lapse provisions relating to planning entitlements and other instances where permits may be granted by the town. So the provisions in the code vary, but they generally set permit expiration dates from one to two years from the date a permit becomes effective. And with the ability in certain instances for staff to allow one-year extensions up to a maximum of three years from the date a permit becomes effective. And so these lapse provisions are generally intended to ensure that action is taken by a permit holder within a timeframe that reasonably assures that the conditions under which the permit was granted have not substantially changed. And so I, those specific permit lapse provisions, which we're talking about this evening, they are in the attachment to your staff report. they are in the attachment to your staff report, which was actually the, that's the staff report from the July 7 meeting. And so I'm, repeat, those are again, added to your, to your packet tonight. And, and so just to clarify this, there are plenty of other permits that the town grants where staff has the discretion to grant additional time. Public Works has encroachment permits, for example, that, they have the discretion. There is no finality to those permits. They are able to be extended at the discretion of the Public Works Director. Same with building permits. Once you get the building permit, those generally can be extended at the discretion of the building official. And so I just, we're not talking about those. These have, these are the permits that we're talking about tonight are ones that the, our municipal code specifically says there's no more discretion on behalf of the staff to grant time. So, you know, as we again discussed at the July 7 meeting, there, there have been, we're coming forward with this resolution. As, as you know, there's been a variety of challenges over the last six months due to COVID-19. I'm not gonna get into the details of that, but they're outlined in the discussion section of your staff report this evening. And that may have affected a permit holder's ability to obtain a building permit or commence construction as originally planned. One thing that I did wanna focus on that I don't think was clear at the last meeting was that due to the Marin County Shelter in Place order, the town was not issuing building permits. We, for a certain period of time, we were processing building app, permit applications, and we were reviewing building permit applications, but we were not issuing building permits from March 16 through May 3 for most types of construction. And that was in compliance, trying to be in compliance with the Marin County Health Order. Those, that policy was documented in letters that we mailed to all of our building permit applicants. And those letters are included in your staff report in, in attachment four. So in considering, as I mentioned, you know, we are, I, I wanted to actually, the next thing to do would be to go through and talk a little bit more about the substantive provisions of the resolution and, and essentially the policy that is in resolution 28/20. Already talked about the 180 days, but I have a couple of slides that I think are trying to clarify exactly how this would work. So if you'll indulge me here for a second, I'll try to pull up this. All right, can you see that slide there? So first, I just wanna talk about eligibility and what permits would be eligible under this resolution. And so specifically, again, I talked about where the specific types of permits that would be eligible, and those are listed here. The conditional use permits, variance approvals, design review and sign, et cetera, et cetera. So there's those. Any of the permits that expired after March 16, 2020 date? And by expired, it means, you know, either have, basically have not, they have permit lapse provisions, generally a designer review would be one year or two years. Some of these others, same thing, one or two years. Those would be eligible for receiving this extension. And then you would also have to have permits issued prior to basically today. Just to note, that was extended also from the last time we discussed this. We talked about June 1st, uh, under item number three here, being the date at which sort of the cutoff for eligibility would, would occur. But I think since the early summer, frankly, and even our discussion on July 7, our understanding of the impacts of, of this pandemic has evolved. And I think we're, we're, we recognize we're really in for a long period, the long haul year, and the impacts may be long-lasting. And so some of those applicants who may have gotten into the process and spent some time and energy and money on getting a permit, a planning, one of these planning permits, planning entitlements, and may have just re, more recently been issued those permits, still may, at the end of the day, need, be in need of some additional time in which to pull their building permits or get issued a building permit or commence construction. And so that's why that was extended out. This is now the list of the, of, of these three, which I mentioned, these are the eligibility criteria. These are the list of the 31 permits that would actually be eligible to receive this 180-day extension. And you can see several of these. Obviously, we've talked about this, and there's information about 159 Prince Royal in your staff report. We've talked about this at the last meeting. That one obviously has already expired, and it would receive 180-day extension from expiration date in 2020. Some others have received, already received a extension, a one-year extension. So they're in year two essentially of their permits. And many more are more recent than 2020. And just to give, I wanted to highlight some examples here. We have, we talked about 159 Prince Royal. This would, if, if adopted or if approved, this, this, if the resolution was approved, the new permit expiration date would be November 16, 2020. The example two relates to 78 Granada. That was originally approved through 12, 2019. We granted a one-year extension on March 3, 2020, right before sort of the shelter in place orders and, and the pandemic really was, started to really impact our community. And this, this would expire after two years on March 3, 2021. And if this resolution gets approved, the new expiration date would be September 3, 2021. And even after that, the applicant could request another year of extension pursuant to 1830090 to September 3, 2020, if certain criteria are meant. And that would be a discretion at the discretion of the zoning administrator, which would be myself at that point in time. But this would push out the year two expiration to September 3, 2021. Just wanted to highlight a couple more, the Robin Drive project still, they have not been issued their building permits yet. Similarly, this would push out their year two, their current expiration date on their precise plan to October 16, 2021. And applicant could request another year of extension to October 16, 2022, which would be that third year at the discretion of the zoning administrator. And this is just another example of a more recent 155 Summit Drive that was approved. In fact, we know now it's actually been put up for sale at this point in time for unknown reasons. But obviously, that may extend the, the, the time and by which a, a building permit is issued for construction over at 155 Summit. And that's really it. Let me stop sharing. And so, you know, I, I think at this point, I just wanted to mention that we did receive a couple of public comment letters. Those have been posted to our website. And myself, Teresa and Todd are happy to answer questions you may have about those letters or anything else that I presented this evening. And with that, I'll just sort of wrap the presentation at this point and happy to answer your questions.
Great, thank you, Adam. That was a very comprehensive presentation. Do we have any questions for staff from council? Nope, okay, then I will go ahead and open this up to public comment. Any members of the public on the line who'd like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. We'll go ahead and get through folks who wanna comment live, and then we'll go back to Rebecca to see if there are any remaining emailed public comments where the author has not had a chance to speak yet. So we'll start off with Edward and then go to Sienna.
Sorry, I was muted myself. If you could start that over again. But I'd like a point of information, if you could put a halt on that timer for a second. And I'm Ed Yates, I'm an attorney in San Francisco. I represent Stacy Abico and Joel Hernandez. And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask a couple of points of information. First, one of my clients, Mrs. Abico, is going to ask if she ceded her time to me. So that's a request that you picked on me first, and it just, I, the order is not helpful. But if, if you could pick on her first, and if she, if the, if, if you approve within your authority that she could cede her time to me, that would be helpful. And then if you do so, I'd like to find out how much time I have. But I guess I will be able to see that on the, on the phone there.
Okay, thanks, Ed. I'm gonna defer to staff on that. I've never seen us do that before, so I'm not sure if that's actually within our practices.
Um, it's within the prerogative of the mayor to do that. It would just need to be consistent for others as well.
We have done that.
I do think that taking the public comment in a different order is probably also within the mayor's discretion and would seem to be a reasonable thing to do.
Okay, sounds good. So Ed, what was your suggestion? Who did you want me to call on first?
Uh, if you'd start with Mr. Hernandez and then Mrs. Abico.
Sure. I will need them to raise their hands in Zoom to be able to call on them. I mean, I, I don't actually see them on the line here.
Oh.
Are they in this meeting?
I don't know, and...
I don't think I can cede you time from somebody who's not in the meeting. So why don't we go ahead and give you three minutes now, and, and you can go ahead and speak. And then if your clients join the meeting and wish to cede further time to you, they can do so after Sienna gets a chance to speak.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, that's completely reasonable. I, that, given that, I do have an additional request that you essentially give me a full five minutes to discuss this, because this is an important matter. And this has been a long road. And, you know, I, I request this, since they've gone to the trouble and expense of retaining me, I think it would be fair to give me a few extra minutes.
I'm sorry, so we're gonna have to keep it consistent with the practice of public comment for the, the preceding portion of this meeting. So it's gonna be limited to, to three minutes per person. Otherwise, we would be, you know, disavantaging folks who have given previous public comment during this meeting. So I'll ask you to go ahead and start your three-minute public comment now, if you wish to do so. And then if your clients want to join the meeting at a later point during this public comment period and cede further time to you, they're welcome to.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, what I, what I'm gonna say, talk about real quickly right now is what I'm not gonna talk about. And I'm not going to tell this council what to do. I think advocates who tell the decision-maker what to do are making a mistake. And I'm simply here to provide some information, some perspective. I have some things to say, but, so first, and I have two things essentially to talk about. One is about my clients, two is about the matter at hand. First, Stacy and Joel are two, yeah, two pretty nice people. They're both first responders, they're both valued members of the community in Cordera. One of them, they're both medical professionals, they have two children. Joel set up a, an emergency response center for COVID patients. These are the kind of people that Cordera wants. I used a little large brand in San Francisco. You don't need any more grumpy old lawyers. I think what, what, what the Cordera needs and Marin needs is vibrant young people. So that's one point. They worked really hard on getting these permits, so has Adam Wolf. And my clients really appreciate his efforts on this. He's done a, a great job, and this has been difficult, it's been a challenge, and it's been a, a long haul. And that's a factor here, and coronavirus is a factor. Regarding this matter, the second issue, I agree with Mr. Cuzimana. This is important. As a former professor of land use law at Golden Gate University, it's, I also know that this is an unusual, and it's a serious case. It's unusual because it's not your average permitting situation. This is a situation where the, the scenario, coronavirus, the city, the town's actions have invoked two aspects of the United States Constitution, the Fifth and the Fourteenth Amendments, the Fifth on takings and the Fourteenth on equal protection. The taking is a temporal regulatory takings, which can be tried in federal district court in result in damages. The other issue, the equal protection issue is, what has happened is my clients have become what's called a class of one. They're not a group like blacks or LGBT. They are a class of one, because the only ones, and it's similarly situated, as 29 others are not similarly situated. Only one entity is, is, is now in this class of one, and therefore is subject to provisions of Section 1983 of the U.S. Code, which allows not just damages, but treble damages. So I think, given how hard the cities, the towns work, how hard my clients have worked, on one side, the awful mess of coronavirus, which everybody's dealing with. You guys have done a great job yourselves, and, but this has interfered. On the other side...
Rebecca, is that the three minutes? Okay, great, thank you, Rebecca. Sorry, I didn't catch that. All right, thank you, Mr. Yates. I just noticed, Mr. Yates, that we do have a call-in number, so if this number ending in...
Actually, Mayor Beckman, I just received an email from Joel Hernandez that he's actually raising his hand under Sienna Hernandez. He didn't realize he had logged in under his daughter's Zoom account.
Okay, great. So I'm going to get Joel on here, and he can verbally cede his time to you.
And also, he says, sorry for the confusion. My wife Stacy is also sitting by my side, and would like to cede her time to Edward.
Okay, great. So I would just wanna hear both of them verbally say that. And then we will give Mr. Yates another six minutes, that will be both of their three minutes. So I'm going to disable Mr. Yates here for a second and bring on Joel and Stacy. Hello?
Hey, hey, sorry. Didn't know I was under my daughter's account. I'm sure Ed was just as confused, but yes, I'm sitting next to Stacy, my wife, who would like to cede her three minutes, but I actually have something to comment on. So I'd like to use my three minutes, but here's Stacy.
Hey, this is Stacy, I'll cede my time, thank you.
Great, thank you both. Okay, so we will have Joel go ahead and give his three-minute comment now, and then we'll turn it back over to Ed for Stacy's three minutes.
All right, great, thank you. Good evening, town council members. So I'm Joel Hernandez, I'm the owner of 159 Prince Royal Drive. First, we'd like to sincerely thank the town staff for the new staff report that is more comprehensive and transparent regarding not only the town's limitations during the Shelter in Place County mandate, which did not allow the town to issue building permits during this time, and caused delays and inefficiency in a variety of ways, but also in detailing more thoroughly how the pandemic has affected families in town, and significantly limiting our ability to do the work needed to submit a permit application in the middle of a global health crisis. Secondly, we would like to thank staff, town attorney, and the town council for listening to us and our feedback and for reconsidering this resolution at tonight's meeting. We are hopeful that the council takes this opportunity to act on passing the resolution this time, which is a more generous timeframe, as has always been granted by many other municipalities.
No more printing during a council meeting, total disaster.
Nationwide.
Got it, grab it quick.
Teresa?
I'm doing three things at once, go. There's no video.
Teresa, you are not muted.
Oh, sorry.
Teenager walking through the, during the council meeting, so sorry.
Sorry about that.
We'll add, we'll add time.
Thank you, thank you, okay. So passing this resolution is truly non-controversial. It is just warranted and the right thing to do for the town citizens. This will greatly benefit all the permits that are affected by this resolution extending deadlines, whether those other permits have an immediate need for it now as we do, or whether it will help them at a later time. I think most town citizens would understand why this resolution was necessary. We had several colleagues, including some that live in our town, write you personally to support our request for this resolution to pass. Trying to justify that this resolution is not indicated ignores the impact of COVID and assumes the town was not affected at all, which is just not the case. There is, again, absolutely no true negative impact on the town by passing this resolution. If we relate meeting the deadline because of our own fault, we would not be making this request. But we are asking you to look at the big picture this time. We would not be here if not for the pandemic happening. We were handicapped by COVID. We were handicapped by COVID and had our hands tied. And so did the town. It is only right that we get this time back. Having to start over with a new design review is a very big deal for us and we will do anything we can to prevent from having to do that. Our application is complete and submitted for almost two months now, waiting to be reviewed. If you just pass the resolution tonight, we are ready to pull this permit and start on the construction as soon as possible. So please pass this resolution for the sake of our family so that we can continue to enjoy living in this town and think positively of how Cordera is truly family-friendly and cares about its citizens, especially in their biggest time of need within the setting of a pandemic. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you, Joel. And we will now go back to Ed for Stacy's three minutes.
What about Sienna? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. The Councilman Cassisa on that here, is she still in the meeting or?
He is here without video at the moment.
I'm still honored to cite some technical difficulties.
I see. And also, if it's possible, if I could see Ms. Stricker's image, because I have a hearing disability and it helps me to be able to see people's faces. If it's not possible, then that's okay. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Councilmember Cassisa. So I'm going to talk a little bit more slowly now, given I got a few more minutes. But I really did go through most of my points and I'm going to go back a little bit into the two points about what I was mentioning. As a former law professor, this is an unusual and interesting case because it involves two issues under the U.S. Constitution, the Fifth Amendment regarding regulatory takings and the Fourteenth Amendment regarding equal protection. And regarding the Fifth Amendment prohibition, it's a prohibition on takings of private property by public entities. This is not a scenario where the city has condemned the property or has occupied it physically. It's a regulatory taking, which means that by its regulatory actions, it has prevented the property, the private property owner, from utilizing their property as they would want. That's not so unusual. There are lots of regulatory takings cases. What's a little unusual is that this would probably be considered a temporal takings case. And these cases are not that rare. California has the leading case on it, the first English Lutheran church case at the Supreme Court. And what that scenario is, is where there is unusual and unreasonable delays for a permit, then a public entity can be liable. So that's, it seems like, well, they can go back and they can start the process again. But the Supreme Court says, "Agencies, be careful on that." Having the coronavirus makes all of our jobs more difficult, but it doesn't excuse anyone from the provisions of this temporal regulatory takings situation because we know that. We know there's a coronavirus. We know there's difficulties, but that doesn't change the delays. So as I mentioned earlier, what makes this different from run-of-the-mill, day-to-day permitting cases is that there are damages in federal court for this kind of thing. The same thing with an equal protection claim as well. And there, as I mentioned, my, Joel and Stacy are a class of one. That invokes Section 1983 for potential liability and treble damages. This is just some information. I just want your board, because you're a council, to know this because this is important, as Mr. Kuzemana said and Adam's worked so hard on. And I think it's serious and I hope that you do balance that. It's your decision. I hope you balance what it is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
And town council.
Great. Rebecca, do we have any emailed public comments that wanted to be read out, who are not in attendance to speak themselves?
Yes, but looking at the attendees list, one of the commenters has her hand raised at this time.
Great, okay, so we will get Margaret.
And I'll get the other items together.
Perfect, thank you.
Good evening. Am I coming across?
Yes.
Good. First, I, as an attorney myself, I cannot believe that another professional, Mr. Yates, would make a veiled threat as he just did. I find it really insulting to the whole profession and I'll leave it at that. And I also want to say that finding this agenda item, to me, first said it diminished entirely the importance of the last discussion and vote that was held. I think that when a vote and a discussion and time is given by council members and a conclusion is made, it's basically, that's it. And I think my letter to the council explains the reasons why I think the regulations and the rules here and the procedures have been really stamped upon. I'm wondering also about this question. Why is it that the planning director and the town manager are willing to reinterpret, bend the rules and regulations and procedures, manipulate and spin the facts and put Cordera at risk for repercussions from other citizens wanting the same sort of bonus points that this one project, and let's really look at the facts. It is just one project. Every other project has one year, two year, or even that magic third year to be granted. This project has already received every available allowance, even those allowances that others are not given for applicants who have taken advantage of the system, who have threatened and now again threaten retaliation if they don't get what they want. And it just makes me disappointed and wonder what this town is all about anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. All right, there are no other hands up right now. So Rebecca, we will take that email comment.
Let me see if I can do this at the same time. I can't. All right, you're just going to have to trust me that I'm watching my timer. This comment is from Phyllis Metcalf. Putting aside the merits of extending the lapse dates for zoning entitlements and permits, I'm concerned the staff report for Item 6A appears to be written subjectively and open to interpretation rather than objectively with a clear factual perspective. The attached addendum to Rosenberg's Rules of Order makes it clear that in the event of a tie vote, the motion always fails as an affirmative vote is required to pass any motion. See final paragraph on page I of the addendum. The staff report makes reference to the Town Council Rules and Procedures, Section 8.9, which states, "In the event of a tie vote on any motion, it shall be deemed that no action was taken on the motion. The two statements are not in conflict. Regardless of the interpretation implied in the staff report, see final paragraph under background on page one of the report, the phrase 'if no action is taken' means there is no change to the status quo that existed before the vote was taken. As respects Agenda Item 6A, no action was taken that changed the status quo of the timeline to obtain a building permit that existed before the item appeared on Agenda of 7/7/20." In other words, the time to obtain a building permit for the project at 159 Prince Royal Drive expired on 5/16/20, when the last of the allowed extensions expired. This project was originally approved on 5/16/20/17 with the standard expectation that the process of applying for and receiving a building permit would be made within a one-year period. An extension of one year effective 5/16/18, as permitted by law, was granted when the applicants did not complete the process to obtain the permit. A final of one-year extension to be effective from 5/16/19 until expiration on 5/16/20 was granted at the discretion of the planning director, Adam Wolf, when, once again, the process to obtain the permit was not completed. Almost three years has passed from the time of the original approval and the time the Marin County Health Order was issued on 3/16/20 that banned most construction activities due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Additionally, I find Detachment 5 permits that would receive a 180-day extension gives a misleading impression that all 31 applications listed could possibly need the extension specified in the resolution. Whereas only one on the list, 159 Prince Royal Drive, which was approved in 2017, has used up the maximum extensions currently allowed. All other applications have an approval date of either 2019, '08, or 2020, '22, which would and would be eligible for extensions under currently existing laws or municipal codes. Memorandum of 7/6/20 that provided additional information as respects this item and the resolution that appeared on 7/7/20 Agenda clearly states the design review permit associated with 159 Prince Royal Drive is the only permit that would expire without any conditional opportunities for extension if the town council does not take any action at this time. See final paragraph on page one of the cited memorandum. And that is three minutes.
Great. All right, thank you very much. That concludes public comments. So we will close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion and a possible motion. Who would like to start off this discussion? I'm happy to then. I will just say, I don't have much to say in addition to what I said when we discussed this matter back in July. To me, this seems like a pretty cut and dry, you know, simple decision, right? We have somebody whose permit was extended to the maximum, you know, under our normal rules and protocols. And then the permit expired during our COVID shutdown. I think, you know, as Adam said in his staff report, the whole point of having a time limit on these permits is to make sure that from the time that the project is approved to the time that it's built, the conditions upon which it was approved, basically the conditions upon which it was deemed to be compatible with the town haven't changed and the project as built is not going to become incompatible with the town. I think it's pretty clear to all of us that nothing dramatic has changed about the character of Cordera or that neighborhood, you know, in the last three months or certainly since the project was approved, other than that coronavirus has hit. And I think it's perfectly understandable how, you know, the onset of this pandemic, especially for residents who are, you know, frontline workers, has affected not only their lives and their abilities to complete the project, but has also affected our own ability to, you know, move the project through our system as we normally do, given that, you know, Town Hall was closed for a while and staff is working from home, which obviously, you know, impacts our efficiency and our ability to get our work done at the pace that we normally do. So to me, this just kind of frankly seems like the right thing to do to help out, you know, a resident who hasn't done anything wrong. You know, yes, you could argue that they haven't been, that they wouldn't be in this position had they not waited to the end of their three-year maximum to move forward with their project. But frankly, like, that's their prerogative under our normal protocol. So, you know, to me, this seems like a pretty simple yes. Who else would like to speak? Yeah, Fred.
Yeah, first of all, I appreciate staff coming back with this because for me, I think there's new information that I think was, no offense, that was somewhat different than what we had before. And I think one key point for me was that, clearly, let me know if I'm wrong, that you, that the building department wasn't open for a period of time. You were not issuing building permits. My takeaway, the last time we talked about this, is that it was pretty much business as normal. So I'm looking at that angle, that again, you weren't issuing permits for a period of time. I appreciate you providing the list because I think while 159 is at this point of time right now, due to the virus and the economic conditions, you know, you could have people losing their jobs. A lot of people don't just, you just don't know when the economy is going to come back. It could be a year, it could be two years from now. It will affect these people, potentially affect these people, I think, down the road. So I think passing the ordinance, it's more widespread. It may not seem like it now, but I think two years from now, we could have something that this falls under. And again, the economic hardship, we're not going to know about. We don't know if there's going to be a vaccine six months from now or a year from now. So again, my two key points are, again, the additional information is on the building permit side where you weren't issuing them. And to me, with this list, it shows that this could potentially affect a lot more people in Cordera, maybe not now, but down the road. So I appreciate the additional information.
Good points, Fred, thank you. David?
Mr. Mayor, I agree with what you said and I also very much appreciate what Fred just said. I think I was alert to the fact that their own situation was held up specifically by the coronavirus and because the town's process was held up before. But there is one other ingredient that I wanted to ask Todd. Did we, in fact, hold up the certificate of occupancy of the completed ADU on that property? Or is that, I'm sorry?
I'll defer that to RJ. I mean, I'm sorry, I'll defer that to Adam. I'll answer that.
Well, it's a little complicated, Councilmember, because, in fact, the shelter-in-place order from March 16th, I think, until the first two weeks, May 31st, actually allowed for new units to be continued, for construction on new units to be allowed to continue. And that was changed, though, however, from May 31st until April 30th. And I said, pretty much all construction activities should not be allowed to continue. So maybe a moot point because they're still, they were, that project was required to stop for about that 30-day period, month of April, till the first weekend in August. Sorry, in May. But they're a long ways off from getting a certificate of occupancy and are still under construction today.
On the ADU?
Yes.
Oh. Well, nonetheless, I think that your expansive list of the projects that are affected and that are being acted upon if we should approve this, to me, is a significant portion of the populace and that we should be sensitive to their being able to make progress and I think particularly sensitive to those who put their own lives at risk acting on the front line of healthcare for us. So I'm in favor again.
Bob, do you have anything to say?
I don't have anything to say, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The only thing that I'll add is just that I, you know, I think it's unfortunate that this has kind of been made out to seem like it's really about one project. And I definitely am sympathetic to the argument that we should not be considering this to apply to projects that are not already at their maximum three-year extension. But I do think it's critical that we look at this, as Fred was saying. This is also a precedent-setting thing, right? Because we, nobody saw coronavirus coming. We're not going to see the next pandemic coming or the next, you know, God knows, hopefully not, you know, some sort of natural disaster. But I think the point is that it's important for us to have this kind of tool in our toolbox to be able to, when hardship hits the town, both town operations and hits residents, that we have a tool there to be able to, you know, kind of show leniency and help people still get their projects done when, you know, when the merits of the actual project and the merits of the approval have not changed. So that's all I've got to say. I will entertain a motion if nobody else has any comments.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Fred. Rebecca, can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Cassisa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee is accused. Councilmember Ovazio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coonheart?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes, thank you. That concludes business item 6A. The resolution is adopted. Item 6B is an update on the town communications plan.
Just a minute.
Rebecca, do you want to start it?
I'm still wrapping up 5A. Okay, I have a lot of spinning plates at the moment. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Todd has some things that he wants to add to this discussion. But the reason why, there are several reasons why this is being brought forward to the council at this time. The first and primary reason being that we have just wrapped up our time with our consultant, communications consultant, Jen Reedy. And this communications plan, which is really essentially staff's work plan for enacting the direction and other items that Jen Reedy found in her internal and external audits that will make us more open and more transparent and more communicative and engaging with our residents and business community. So we wanted to bring this forward at this time to ensure that what we think we're going to be doing aligns with what council would like staff to be doing as far as communicating. think we're going to be doing aligns with what council would like staff to be doing as far as communications. And also we wanted a chance to introduce to council the mission statement that staff worked on in consultation with Mayor Beckman, who worked on the subcommittee with us and we, we vetted it through staff and went through several iterations of it and staff is, is proud of it. And we think it really reflects our, our mission and want to make sure that it reflects the mission of the council as well, because it will be on the website and in other documentations and it will be something that we carry out to our, our staff as what we want staff to embody on the public facing side. So that being said, I'll leave it to Town Manager Kusamano to introduce the other item or we can discuss the work plan first, whichever you prefer.
Todd, do you want to go ahead?
Sure. I just want to jump in. Again, I I just, I really enjoyed the process working with Jen Reedy, the mayor and Rebecca. I honestly brought the least amount to the table in the conversation, but it was helpful for me. I think my perspective as I approached the communications kind of work plan, I, I know we called it our communications plan, but it's really kind of our work plan of the areas that we see that we've identified of, of things that we can do to improve. And so you kind of see those bullet points and it's kind of like a roadmap for staff in the council to kind of incorporate as we move forward. And, and you know, we've, we met every Tuesday for a period of months. We really wanted to report back to the council, kind of on the work that we did. And one of the key components to this is, is our mission statement. And, and you know, the town of Corder Madera currently does not have a mission. And so this is part of one of your attached attachments and
We may not have a mission statement, but we have a mission.
Oh, we, yeah, we definitely have a mission. It's to dominate. But you know, I, I approached this how we, everything that we do, how we hire people, how we promote people, our succession planning, everything of the council, how we communicate with the council, how the, how the council interacts with the community. Everything we do, we, we're public servants. We provide a service. And so to step back and really think about what we're trying to accomplish and how we do it. And it's really key. It's simple. But we need a mission, you know, because a lot of times when we fall short, we're like, where do we fall short? And you can go to, to a stick mission statement. And I know we can all edit this. And, and we certainly appreciate feedback and we can do it offline and come back to you. But this is kind of what we work towards, a mission and values. Everything we do aligns and extends the town's mission and values. And our mission, the mission of the town of Corder Madera is to serve our residents and businesses in a way that advances our community's health, safety and quality of life. We strive to deliver services in courteous, transparent and an effective manner. The work alongside residents to improve the beauty, infrastructure and character of our town in a fiscally responsible way that ensures vibrant prosperous future for all Corder Madera residents. And then with that, we have some values and we, and we hit those bullet points, customer service and excellence. We're going to be respectful. We're going to be responsive and we're going to be effective. When we did these surveys with Jen Reedy and we really talked to, to the mayor and to, and to Rebecca and staff, you know, really where we fall short, it's not our ultimate decision making. And, and I always think we can do better with that. It's always setting up the council and staff with the most information and make the most thoughtful decision. But what it is, it's, it's when we get into trouble, it's when we're not responsive. When someone reaches out to us to respond, to say, hey, I'm not positioned right now to respond, but I'm going to get back to you. And then the important thing is that you get back to them. They might not always like the answer, but if you can articulate it and you're thoughtful on that responsiveness, people understand it and they remember it. And that's where we've fallen short. And so this is a communications plan, but it's also really, really helpful for staff to see where we're falling short, maybe as a staff as a whole, but also in, in some of our respective departments where we can possibly do better. Operational effectiveness, town officials and staff, two-way communication and participation, inclusive, open, democratic and transparent processes, cultivate volunteerism and civic responsibility. I think our town is one of the strongest for that. That's what we're known for. We want to continue to embrace that with our younger generation of Corder Maderans. And then further excellence in, in public education, business, recreation and, and the overall town. And so as we started to talk to the community and other jurisdictions of how they also looked at us and how we looked at ourselves, we had a team building with your, with your directors and Jen Reedy and we, we, we kind of came up with some of these, these thoughts of how, what we think is important. And so again, we, we would appreciate feedback, not only tonight, but moving forward. This is just an update. We want to let you know what we've kind of worked towards. But this is a moving target for us moving forward. There's also some actions to support our goals. And one of the key ones is, is hiring a communications person, a manager, not someone to, to spin the story. It's to really step back and, and take this and manage it in everything we do, not only in how we go out and, and the process of a project and go through that. But like everything we do, we're moving forward together. You know, all the departments understand what we're saying. We're all moving in line with the council and the community. And we really need a communications person. And that's one of the top recommendations of Jen Reedy, who is really outstanding through this process. And I, and I have some, at the end of this, I have some recommendations for the council to consider and come back to you. Again, you can see the bullet points for the, for the actions moving forward. A lot of them are outlined in the report. I think they're very thoughtful. We support them. A lot of them seem obvious, but again, it's not always so obvious. So one of the decision points for council, I, I would be helpful for staff to get your feedback on. We have identified, we need a communications person and a communications person is, is someone, and I, I explained it, we outlined it in our report. It's on page two at the bottom of your staff report. It's the second paragraph at the bottom under communications manager. And this is what we're looking for. We're looking for a communications person that would be hands-on. Highly strategic advisor who understands how to best craft and deliver nuanced messages to support the town's goals and programs. And under the general direction of the town manager, this position is responsible for creating, overseeing and monitoring the effectiveness of how the town communicates. This also just isn't about communication. It's about the expectations of what we expect of our staff from a customer service delivery standpoint. As we started to go through this, we identified that we absolutely need a position. The question is, is it a part-time or full-time position? You know, full-time positions as communication managers in, in the Bay Area, they range from $70,000 to $100,000 plus. You know, we're a small town. We have a need for it. But you know, it's, it's kind of like in all of our decision making, hey, let's do this thoughtfully. Let's identify the issue and let's see what our options are. And so first we looked internally and there's somebody that meets the criteria. It's not some, something that I would normally identify in a, in a staff report that, hey, I have identified a person. I would make it open internally to all my staff. But when you look at what is expected, how we're operating currently and the current job expectations of all of our staff members, it actually narrows down to one person and it's pretty simple. And it's actually Mike Moriarty, our code enforcement officer. And on its face, you'd say, well, our code enforcement officer. Mike Moriarty was not hired just to be code enforcement. Mike Moriarty has a history in law enforcement. He has a history in communication. He understands government. He has actually taken on the role, as many on this, on the council know, as we get complaints from our community and the frustrations of staff on some of our most really contentious issues of, of getting a permit, a project. You know, you get a stop work order. It's, it's highly upsetting to our residents. And we all get involved in it. And Mike Moriarty is usually one of them under the help of Adam, our director, of problem solving that and being thoughtful in the approach and trying to help mediate that. And so Mike understands government, understands the role of each department. What he's turned into over the past six to eight months is really that customer service. Hey, you know, he, he works under me, under my direction. And he's like, look, customer service, how can we do better? How can we communicate that? So a lot of our communications over the past months have come from him and his recommendations. As we've got this process with Jen Reedy, it really is a seamless recommendation that I think if, if Mike is interested, that we internally open that up and provide that opportunity to him. And what we would do is we would change his role because there's two issues at hand. One is the communications manager and one is enforcement on our ordinances. And it would be to elevate Mike to a manager role. And he's proven it that he can do it. He's the right person for it. And it would be to make him a code enforcement and communications manager. He would then oversee the $100,000 requested budget request that'll come to you at a future meeting to have code enforcement officers under his direction, to train them and, and to provide that seven day a week robust enforcement and coverage. The second piece would be to provide the communications plan. So our mission, to make sure our staff is following it, to make sure I'm not saying something at the, as a town manager in a public meeting of what I expect from my staff in customer service, but then have maybe a staff member not have the same philosophy. Right? That's that expectation of training and holding people accountable. And so that's what I see from him. I really, that paragraph and the bottom of page two, that's what I expect of that position. He would come back to our council and we would pass a social media plan, a communications plan, finalize the mission statement. And then we would just go attack this communications plan, you know, moving forward. I'm excited about it. And again, as we move forward, I also think having kind of a, a small budget, but necessary of those that understand where it comes seamless of, of how to communicate in today's social media. You know, looking at interns, being creative of our younger generation of how we can engage them to help us with how to best communicate with our community. And so we're not done yet. This is just sharing where we're at. But I think one of the strong recommendations is to move forward with kind of restructuring our department a little bit as a town and broaden Michael Moriarty's duties. He's one of the only positions that isn't currently, his duties aren't currently outlined and worked out. We did it on purpose because we saw potential with him to, to start with code enforcement, but to see what he was capable of. And that's really what your staff has done over the last six to eight months. I think now it's clear what he's capable of doing. And this isn't a position where we're getting cute and just making it for one person. I think when we're all gone 10 years from now, that's part of our legacy. It's something that's, that's in place for our, our future leaders, you know, to ensure success and how we communicate right with our community. But with that, I'm happy to stop talking, answer any questions and take comment.
Awesome. Thank you, Todd. We will go to questions from council, starting with Charles.
Yeah. So Todd, just one point of clarity. Outside of the communications plan, identifying the need for a communications manager and then strengthening the position. Did you mention that it's also because county enforcement is also falling back to this, the towns and cities in Marin? And so therefore for us to properly be able to enforce current code and, and the town that we need more staff to help also as well. And, and the message is quite contentious now. So we need someone who's really expert in guiding the process with these new staff.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Yes. And I'm sorry, I didn't cover that, but you're absolutely 100% correct. And this would be the same person handling both fronts, which I think for us is really important. Being the same person, it gives us a huge advantage. And it's a big time issue for us. How the county is operating.
David?
Have you thought of the word ombudsman in connection with this role? Because it sounds to me as though you're talking both about a kind of receiving of the contentious issues and also solving and being able to work across departments. To me, that's what an ombudsman can do. You don't have to answer right away if this strikes you as a strange idea, but.
Yeah, I, I haven't called it that, but you know, I know the definition and yeah, I, that, that's how we're operating now. Mike Moriarty works under me. And I did it purposely because he had to work across multiple departments. And he, and sometimes it could be with a director and he had to have the authority to bring departments together and make kind of decisions. And so, yeah, absolutely. By definition, it's, I see a lot of similarities.
Thank you. Yeah, Fred?
Yeah, I got just a couple of questions on the update on the plan. One, it talks in here about public meetings. It mentions town council and then later it goes on to mention town meetings. Are we, are we talking about all, I want to say town meetings, including planning commission, park and rec, is it all encompassing? I got the feeling from this, it was just more limited to town council. And that's just was my impression.
Eli, the mayor. It's all, yeah.
Yes, we'll update that.
It's all.
Thank you.
Okay. And then one other question also is that it also talks in here, it says, things on page four, it says more frequent monitoring and responding in social media post. Two question, two parts. One part, what do we do now as far as monitoring social media and how are we responding? And is there a before and after? If we go forward, the communications manager, what would that look like?
Yes, currently we close the comment section when we post to Nextdoor. And the reason why we do that is because it's not monitored 24/7 and we don't have the staff capacity to answer and respond to the questions that we would be getting through that channel in a timely manner. So yes, once we have a social media policy in place, which is currently being developed, once the social media policies in place that would dictate how our social media's postings are handled and responded to. They would outline all of that. And then that would fall into the communications manager or other staff as directed to make sure that those, those questions and concerns that we receive through those channels are elevated to the appropriate departments.
Okay. And then correct me if I'm wrong. If I can remember, I think that for, there's a state of the town, but I think that's for the chamber of commerce mostly. If I can remember. Is, has there any consideration on the plan to doing that, but doing it townwide? So it's not just limited to the chamber, but it'd be open to, to all citizens. It's just for consideration. I didn't know if there was any thought into that. It just seems, again, it's another way to communicate if we're doing it.
Open it up. I, we didn't discuss that specifically. Mayor Beckman can, can jump in with his thoughts, but one suggestion that Mayor Beckman added to the communications plan was the addition of a twice yearly mailing to the town, which
Once or twice, whatever, whatever makes sense.
It could serve as a snapshot or state of the town, but if that was something that council felt would be warranted and useful.
I certainly, I certainly think that's a good idea, Fred. And I, you know, like you said, the, the, the state of the town is a chamber of commerce fundraiser, even though it's called that. So, you know, it's an important event for them, but I think also, you know, there's maybe an opportunity for us to just do our, you know, some, come up with some other event. That's like a once yearly, just, you know, same thing, right? All the department heads come in and just give like a snapshot for everybody. I think that's a really good idea.
Thanks. And last question, how come, how come nobody likes Twitter?
That, that's a good question. That arose out of Jen Reedy's external audits where she had interviews with other cities of, of local and regional, similarly sized to us. And all of their communications managers said that they get very little engagement through Twitter. And then if you're going to direct your efforts, it, it would make sense to focus on Facebook and Nextdoor. But honestly, we have, we, we can have a Twitter account go active and you can set things to simultaneously post. So it would not be a hardship if you wanted staff to post agendas and other notifications to Twitter at the same time they're being posted elsewhere.
Your big tweeter, Fred?
I don't tweet. I just monitor it. And I know it's a lot, law enforcement posts a lot of stuff on there about accidents and stuff. So, all right, thanks.
It's, it's probably used as informational, but maybe that they, the other PIOs are just gauging that based on the engagement they receive, the back and forth communications from the subscribers and maybe people. I, I don't engage with Twitter. I look at things, I open things.
We, we should be steering ourselves by the stars of our future, not by the waves of Twitter.
Anyway, it was a suggestion and a recommendation, but you're, you're welcome to recommend otherwise.
Any other questions for staff on this? I just had one question. You know, Mike is fantastic. He's incredible. I think he's one of our recent hires that has really been a game changer for Corder Madera. But he's only human. So I just want to make sure that he's got the bandwidth to oversee both code enforcement and communications, because I think those are two really big portfolios that have been kind of like maybe somewhat undervalued in Corder Madera historically, but I think they're really central to, to the role that local government should be playing, especially in the 21st century. So I just, I, I guess like, to me, it, it strikes me as maybe a lot for one person, but I could be wrong. And I guess it all comes down right to like what kind of support structure he has. So.
Well, he would still have the support of the rest of us who have been doing donations and out.
It's a great question. So what I'll tell you, it is his support. He, he is not going to be out there 24/7 like he is now. We're going to step back and he's going to take those most difficult kind of cases to help us problem solve and give direction and train. And so he'll need that support there. As it relates to like just putting problem solving, responding to the community on our post, you know, having that interactive process, that just is, is not his responsibility. That'll be all of ours. He's part of the admin team. And so Rebecca, myself, my directors, we will always, that's our expectation. It's just not on him. But what is important for him is to be that voice for all of us to go, look, we need to be united. What are we trying to accomplish here? And to facilitate that thoughtful conversation with staff before we put something out, like a building or planning. before we put something out, like a building or plant is going to put something out. We've had this nice thoughtful conversation with a team of seven, right? And so he's key to that. And that's what's happening now. And that's how I see it. But yeah, we definitely aren't just going to overload Michael and say, now you're responsible for all the communication. That's an expectation. And I think you have of us too, that that's the team.
Right. And I heard you say that there, that you are going to come back and request a little budget addendum for, to get some, some, you know, code enforcement folks out there who can be kind of the the feet on the ground, which is great. Can you speak to any sort of planned, like additional firepower in terms of communications, even if it's just like interns or just folks who can like, you know, very easily gin up graphics for us, things like that? Like, we can still have the staff, the professionals, you know, putting together the content. But I think, you know, there's, I think, like a high schooler who can do like little graphic design thing goes a long way.
Within the current budget, I believe I can set aside enough money to do just that. It gives us kind of a wide range. You'll give the OSF manager authority. You'll have to give it to me. But I think I have it in the current budget to do just that. Hey, if we want to do some nice thoughtful things with graphics on the website, or like you said, hire someone to do some work on a specific project. We have that capability and we'll need it because Michael, he's not, we don't want him doing that. We want, you know, those that are really good and excited about doing that kind of work. And I plan on coming back to you if I get that feedback from you at the next meeting. And I just, one last thing, if I can, because I'm proud of it. I've had a lot of, you know, through COVID, we've talked about it. I think people are, it's difficult for everyone and like staff. Like I told you at one of the last meetings, you know, they're, they're human too, and they're going through it and they take this to heart, you know, criticism to heart. And I, I'm like really proud of like what the feedback was from the community. We gave Jen a number of names. Half of the names aren't necessarily always the most happy with staff and our decisions. And so it was a pretty good list, but it's a list that your town manager really respects. I respect those community members and I won't go through all the descriptors. It's in the staff report as an attachment. But there's a couple that were reoccurring of your staff in the town council. Because it was a, it was a survey of all of us, the town council and your staff as a leadership team. And reliable, hardworking leadership, passion, integrity, energy, you know, and there's, there is others. But those were key ones that were common phrases that were repeated of the town council and the staff. And, you know, government isn't always described as that. And I just, you know, people aren't always happy with our recommendations or, you know, some of our, our decisions. But, you know, I, I'm very thankful that they, they recognize that, you know, that we care and we're working hard and we're passionate. So that made me really satisfied for our staff and the council. So that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions from council members? And if not, we will turn this over to the public. Okay, then we're going to open this up for public comment. If you would like to comment on the town communications plan, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcml.org. That's the communications plan and also this discussion we're having about communications and code enforcement staff and and those kind of changes. And the first hand up is Roy.
As part of the communications plan, perhaps the town council and the sanitary district two board can figure out a method or a way to get a start time certain for sanitary district board to meetings. So someone that wants to to address something at the council at the first of the meeting and then the board at the first of that meeting, you gotta wait through the whole meeting. And I know one time it indicated that the sanitary district two meeting is going to start at 8:30 or whenever. Didn't start until 10 o'clock. So there's got to be a little more thought around getting a time certain start. Maybe it's a different day that you hold it particularly that you're doing, we're doing virtual now. Makes it a little easier to get a separate on a meeting. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Roy. And I'm sad to say you just reminded me that we do have an SD2 meeting after this, so that's very sad. Any other public comments right now? I am not seeing any hands. Rebecca, did we have any emailed public comments?
We did not have any emailed public comments.
Okay, then we will close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. What is this direction to staff, I guess? And and a possible approval of the strategic communications plan and mission statement. David?
And I am, I, you know, I, whenever I'm given a written document, I always dig in and I look for a place where I want to, I want to turn this knob or or adjust that or scrape or erase, use my eraser. I really like the mission statement as prepared and the value statement as prepared, and I can't see any improvements at all.
Okay, thank you. Bob?
I think this is terrific. I thought it was really well written, really well done. And most importantly, we really needed, we needed a communications plan and a manager for a while. And I think we should go ahead and approve this as quickly as possible. Thanks.
Beautiful. Thank you. Fred or Charles, do you guys want to add anything?
No, just I'll just ditto what both David and Bob just said.
I will just say that since I have worked as part of the kind of little working group with with Rebecca and Todd and Jen on this, I want to thank all of them. Jen has been great. Rebecca and Todd have been really fantastic to work with on this. I think, you know, like you guys said, I think the the plan that we put out here is fantastic. Think the changes we're going to make going forward are going to be really, you know, they're going to make the town stronger and they're going to really bring our community closer together, which is critical. Also want to thank Charles for putting together the graphic that we're kind of using as a header on a lot of town documents now. It's the same graphic that his background here on Zoom that he made. So thank you, Charles, and go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I'm a little past high school, but I did my best. So the only other thing is, is I just wanted to talk about what you had said, Eli, on the, the dual, the dual use, right? So, you know, I'm really into biomimicry as a design and a thinking, right? And that's nature always puts two uses or more into like one purpose, right? And that's because of limited resources and ultimately we're a town with limited resources. So the survival of a, of a position, ultimately, if it's able to do more with less, ensures that it can do more for with with less. So while it might be hard for him at first, I think in talking with Todd, there, there will be ways to enable him to have the resources and, you know, community basically help him with the process. But, you know, I just wanted to acknowledge that I have full confidence that he would be able to, or anybody in the future, if structured correctly, would be able to to manage both at that manager level, not the implementation level. So.
Great. Thank you. Teresa, do we need a motion to approve the communications plan or is it just directional?
Yes.
Sorry, which? Motion or? I think you are mouthing motion. Okay. Yeah, Todd, go ahead.
Did Teresa say motion? Because I was just going to say direction. Because this, okay, because this is, because this is kind of a work plan for us. We still have a social media policy to bring back to council. And so this is just kind of an update and then direction on how we're working. And we'll come back to you ultimately with the final product, but we wanted to make sure that we had your feedback.
Great.
Make sure we're headed down the right path.
Cool. Do you feel you have clear direction?
I do. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, guys. That was item 6B. Item 6C is consideration of whether to authorize the Director of Public Works to execute a contract with San Francisco Estuary Institute for $175,000 for scientific analysis and adaptation planning.
Thank you, Mayor Beckman and members of the council. So almost to the day, a year ago, San Francisco Estuary Institute was added to our climate adaptation plan team. And they were given a $21,000 contract at that time and were extended with an amendment in January for a net total of about $64,000 worth of services. They've been a total huge add value to the team. I think they've really elevated our overall plan and obviously it's still in draft form. You know, just from speaking to other stakeholders in the area, you know, environmental resource folks. It's really, I think, streamlined our process and put us, advanced us a lot further than than we had hoped. With that in mind, I'm proposing a $175,000 contract over a period of about two and a quarter years so that we can continue to use them as a resource as needed. You know, we've identified a couple of activities that we'd like them to continue on, and that's to see this climate adaptation plan through. And then also be involved in other activities of analysis where we have our storm drain master plan as part of our adopted budget. And then also we have some potential design work we're hoping to re-scope as part of a prior TAM grant that would be on Paradise Drive. So and get that to include some sea level rise components. And I just think there's also a lot of potential grants that we hope come our way that could present some great opportunities. And also just further coordination with these environmental resource folks, because they're really going to be a huge part of us being able to move these projects forward, which are very important to the town. And with that, I'll, I'll entertain any questions or clarifications you may have.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for staff? If there are no questions from the council, we will go ahead and open this up to public comment. If you'd like to comment on this item, please raise your hand through Zoom or send an email to publiccomment@tcml.org. Rebecca, have we received any emailed public comments on this item?
We have not received any email public comments.
Great. Thank you. And we do not have any hands up from the audience. So we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion and a possible motion. We'd like to start us off. Bob?
I don't think there's a town in Marin County that's more affected by climate change than Corder Madera from a flood standpoint and a fire standpoint. And I think we should absolutely go ahead with this. This is a great idea. Thanks.
Could not agree more. Yeah, David?
Agreed and oh.
No, then Charles, go ahead.
Agreed. And I just wanted to point out with RJ actually on the line that the presentation that he made to the countywide Executive Steering Committee of Baywave was excellent and regarded so by people from Sausalito and Belvedere and Tiburon and Santa Fe. And I, I think it's in part because we have reached to the real experts like SFEI and we're using those experts responsibly. So I'm totally in favor of this.
RJ, you did us proud. Charles?
Well, I also just wanted to add that the town manager shared a link to the town council recently about a grand jury report from the county Marin. And, you know, it highlighted the success of of the report that we've done and some of the work of staff. And, you know, as we look at what this budget is and why we would want to obtain those services as we start to talk to broader stakeholders and think about how we're going to deal with this as a region, it allows us to employ the, 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 the right people to continue our voice in a larger spectrum. And so I just wanted to kind of acknowledge that both for the success of our own staff, but then one of the main reasons that I think in the staff report, they're identifying the need to move it forward. And I think we will benefit immensely from, from continuing this service. So I just wanted to add that. So.
Thank you. Fred?
Yeah, I'm fully supportive and I appreciate again, all the hard work RJ that you've done. And what I really like, it seems like we're Corder Madera, we're on the cutting edge and we're taking the lead in this. So I think that's really great. Kudos.
I completely agree, Fred. I think honestly, like I've lived in Corder Madera my whole life. I have seen a huge change in in Corder Madera in, in the, the attitude of, of the local government and in the way the local government is regarded by the residents. And I think it's because we've just gotten so serious. And I think, Fred, you hit it right on the head when you said we're on the cutting edge. Bob was absolutely right. You know, there, there really is not a community in Marin County that is more affected by climate change than we are. We take it from both sides, right? We've got the, the sea level rise on the, on the east side and wildfire risk on the west side. So I think, you know, we're right where we need to be on the front lines of this and making sure that we get out ahead of this. And I fully support this. And with that, I would entertain a motion.
Move that we approve the request for extending the contract.
Great. Everybody seconded it. Rebecca, can we vote, please?
Councilmember Casiza?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia?
Yes.
Ms. Markunhardt?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes, thank you.
This is time to return to 5A since we still have staff on the line.
Oh, sure. Is, oh, was, was staff relevant to 5A trying to go home? Or we've got one more, one more business item. I don't, okay, we can go back to 5A. Sure. Okay, let us return to item 5A, which was ordinance number 1,000 related to dogs and parks. So I believe, I believe that we were going to introduce an amended version of this motion and then entered, of this ordinance, and then entertain a motion on it.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Rebecca to share the document that we've worked on. And I want to thank staff. It was a little bit of a group effort here. Thank you to Rebecca and Ashley and RJ and Todd. And also Mary Marley in my office too was working, working through the phone on that one. So we put together, the amendments have to happen in a number of different places. None of them are overly complex. And so if you want to make any changes, we can do that here. So Rebecca, if you want to share the screen, this is a red line of the document that was in your materials with extra red lines that we just added. Everything that was added is in yellow. So don't worry about, there's some font changes. We'll clean up later. They, they don't have to be corrected here, but just let's look at the text.
I think this should be it.
Okay, do you want to just maybe?
One page at a time?
Yeah, I think so people can read it. Do you want to just do? Yes, that would be great. Okay, so, so this looks like, do you have the red line version, Rebecca, that you could send, which is what I emailed to you? This is not in red line. I just want, want to be able to really see what.
Oh.
Yes, it is.
It has the notation.
No, no, the, yeah.
It has the bars.
Maybe if I put it in review mode.
Actually, yes, all markup. That's what you want. Yes, all markup. Okay, so you can see in yellow what the red lines are. So there was a little bit of a typo at the beginning of this that didn't need to be there. We took out. But substantively adding in the title, adding section 8.04.021 to prohibit animals in the waterway on the east side of Town Park. And then making an additional reference in the title at the end so that a violation of that section is also an infraction. Moving down, we've added an additional whereas clause, whereas on September 15th, 2020, that's today, the council discussed the desire to keep dogs out of the waterway on the east side of Town Park. And then if we move to the second page at the top, this is the operative provision that we've added. It's a new section, 8.04.022 prohibiting animals in Drainage Canal Easement A, which is sort of the official name of it. And then the operative provision, it is unlawful for a person having ownership, custody or control of any animal to permit the animal to be in the waterway on the east side of Town Park, also known as the low canal. And then finally, in the penalty provision, we have added this new section that we've created so that it will be, a violation will be an infraction, which is consistent with the other provisions and the ordinance. And I think that is all that we have changed. So do you have any questions or do you have any concerns or want to make any changes to these changes that we are proposing?
I am good. I cannot see the rest of the council here.
Mr. Mayor, do we need to have public comment on these?
Oh, probably. Teresa, do we?
You could certainly do it if you want, but you've already taken public comment on this item and this is, you've given.
This is true.
This is what you've done. So if you want to take it, you may, but it would be unusual to do so at this point.
Okay, we, yeah, we, this is all reflecting, reflecting things that we decided after hearing public comment on this item. Nothing, there's no new material here. So we will, I'll just go ahead and entertain a motion to introduce ordinance 1,000 as amended on the screen.
So moved.
Great. Second, perfect. Thank you. Rebecca, can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Casiza?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia?
Yes.
Ms. Markunhardt?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes. Great. Thank you. Sorry, Ashley didn't realize we were keeping you.
Eli, can I make one quick comment? For comment. I think this is one of the things that demonstrates our mission statement and some values that were discussed before. Within like the last hour, four staff members were able to revise this. So we didn't have to wait two weeks to bring it up again. It'll move forward in a very. It'll move forward in a very quick manner. And again, it just shows staff is totally responsive, acted quickly. And again, it just demonstrates values and mission statement. So kudos. Thanks.
Fred, I'm glad you said something I did too. I wrote down a bunch of new words to add to that communication plan transparency, responsive, collaborative, communicative, and resilient. And the fact that you did it in the public eye so that they understand how quickly and robustly you can respond to the comments is just amazing. I hope that it sets a precedent for governance forever, right? Like, but so.
Yeah, and I thank Ashley for staying on for so long.
Yes. Now you're free. Free Ashley.
Ashley.
Thank you guys for bringing those points up. And thank you to everyone who just worked on that quick revision. And thank you, Ashley, for being here with us. All right, we will go back to item 6D, approve fiscal year 2019, 2020 unaudited actials, general fund revenue and expenditure report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to take this report for Daria. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so her staff report as always is just well thought out. This is the unaudited financials for the general fund for 1920. And her staff report outlines it really well. I'm happy to answer any questions about it, but really I just want to give you a quick three minute overview visually of what she's talking about. And so before we get there, I wanted just to go over, you know, sales tax revenue because that's a big one for us. And for fiscal year 28, 2018, 2019, we anticipated at the start of that year that we would bring in about 6.5 million in sales tax revenues. But as the year proceeded, we just had a really good, really good returns from our 25 top earners. We revised that in December to 7.2. It ultimately closed at $8.1 million. So originally we anticipated 6.5, we brought in $8.1 million. It just shows you the volatility of our sales tax and how conservative Daria is, your finance director stays with that. She takes, you know, we do third party analysis and we really take a conservative approach to start the fiscal year with our sales tax. This is an example. At the end of fiscal year 1819, going into 1920, we projected here at the start of the year, our sales tax revenue to be about 6.7 million. When COVID hit, we came back to the council and we said, this is going to hurt and be pretty catastrophic. We lowered those estimates by 30% and brought them down to 5.8 million. That was our projection. As I scroll down here, we were looking at a $2.3 million deficit at the close of fiscal year 1920. $1 million of that 2.3 million, however, was due to an extra payment to our trust fund. As you know, as I explained in fiscal year 1819, we had a $3 million surplus. And so council decided, that's staff's recommendation, let's keep 2 million of that in the general fund as needed. And let's take a million dollars of it and add to the already $900,000 that we put into our pension trust as a deposit. And so if you look at this number, I mean, really, we were anticipating a $1.3 million deficit because we didn't spend that extra million. That went into our pension trust. With that said, if you look at where our projections actually came in, we came in at 6.35 million dollars. So we came in approximately, you know, 300 and some change short of what our original sales tax expectations were at the start of the year. The remaining monies is are really 200,000 of that shortfall is deferments that we anticipate to see 95% of that in this fiscal year. So when you take that deferment into consideration of the sales tax, we have $178,000 deficit. And really that'll be closed in additional payments this year. I want to be careful when I say we had a deficit because we really didn't. If you took out the the $1 million payment into our pension trust, we actually had an $800,000 surplus. And when you close the door and we get reimbursed for the $200,000 in deferments, you have about a million dollar surplus. The reason for it is our 25, our 20, our top 25 sales tax earners pivoted quickly into COVID. Curbside pickup happened possibly a little bit earlier than, you know, you know, the county caught up after the fact. There were a number of maneuvers that were made over a key six week period in April that really kept the town in a positive situation. And so it's outlined in Daria's report, but I wanted to give you that visual kind of, you know, explanation of kind of saying, well, wow, Todd, you know, our revenues went from 8.1 million in sales tax from 1819. And this year it almost dropped almost $2 million. Well, that's not really the case. We trend annually about 6.5 to 6.9 million dollars in sales tax. And so that's what we kind of look at every, every year. I originally thought that it would take till 2023, 2024 to recover from this. It's not going to be the case. We're going to recover a lot quicker. What we're starting to look at now is because Marin County is usually 12 to 18 months behind a recession. You know, we're going to have a national, there is going to be a national hit and we are going to see a recession. And so we're thinking about that now. Some of the, the work that we're doing with our big shopping centers and business owners, you'll, you'll hear about in the coming weeks and months publicly. Council will obviously know about it a little sooner. But we're making some exciting, there's going to be some exciting news of future businesses coming into the town of Corder Madera that will significantly impact our sales tax revenue. So there's some really exciting work being done at the staff and business level in our community and we'll share that moving forward. And with that, I'm just happy to stop and answer any questions. I'm not saying we're out of the woods by any means, but you know, when I talked to you four months ago, I thought that we could potentially take a $5 million hit to revenue over a two-year period. And I felt like we had a plan to take that hit and to, and to recover from it without sustaining job losses and service cuts. What I'm here to tell you is we are not going to take the $5 million hit. I think we're going to be okay. But we also still have a lot of work to do. We originally in this current budget anticipated a total shutdown for a period of months. That will not happen with the decision-making at the state level moving forward. We could potentially, you know, we're in the red category now from purple. You saw that in the, in the news. The decision-making process will not be a total shutdown, but we could regress backwards. It could take an impact to our, to our revenues, but not at the level that we anticipated. So we're still doing a lot of work. We're going to keep the current budget at what we anticipated right now because we want to continue to stay conservative. At the mid-year point, we'll give a pretty robust report and any recommendations at that point, if we want to revise anything. But Daria has just done a really good job with our third-party vendor HDL, who really evaluates our sales tax. When you talk about projections, it's just not a guesstimate by HDL. They can actually, I mean, a lot of this information is confidential just to staff because of the laws of sales tax revenue and protections confidentially. But we can see the numbers real time of what's happening. And I can tell you that I feeling more comfortable, but obviously I'm not ready to just change the budget and spend money. We're going to stay conservative, but I wanted to give you an update on where we are, are at right now. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Todd, and thanks to Daria for doing this work. Do we have any questions from the council for staff? If not, I'll go ahead and turn it over to the public. Anybody on the line who'd like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmaile.org. Rebecca, do we have any email public comments?
No email public comments.
Great, thank you. Seeing no hands up, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion and a motion. Yeah, Bob?
Great work and I'll move to approve.
Second.
Great.
I'm actually quite dumbfounded by how good this looks. I really am. It's, I've been listening to leaders from other communities nearby and you hear the violins of sadness playing in the background. This is really great.
Yeah, Daria has done an amazing job. I, you know, kudos to her. I think, you know, as a public agency, when you're working with tax dollars, you really can't be too conservative. And I think Daria is just being such a good steward of public funds. So hats off to her and the rest of the staff. And Rebecca will take that vote whenever you're ready. Thank you.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Keenheart?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes, thank you. That concludes our business items and brings us to item seven, which is council reports. We will start with the town manager.
I have no updates at this time.
All right, and we will just go down the line then. Fred, you want to start us off?
Yeah, I attended the MCC, MC Economic Recovery Committee. That was last week. There were change from every Friday. Now we're just meeting once on a monthly basis. And then I'd just like to add one thing, since Todd didn't have a report, kudos again to JR because RJ, I'm sorry. God, I keep getting the ewing thing in my head. Kudos again to him though, because again, we do a lot of walking around town. Tamil Vista is looking really good. I know work has started on Redwood Highway, Harbor and Echo. There's work going on there. Skunk Hollow looks like it may have another two to three weeks. There's all these great improvement projects that are going around town. So again, I mean, kudos to RJ and Public Works. So I just want to thank him again. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Charles?
Yeah, so I had another special meeting about, discussion about the North South Greenway. Lots of good progress. Ultimately, I think Corder Madera's understanding and design is well ahead and it's really about funding mechanisms moving forward. But other areas of interest is kind of discussions about working with the county in ways to sign it and actually acknowledge it and make that consistent throughout the communities and make it a real amenity for the whole county, which was really exciting. And I like, I hope to be able to share that if there's work product that comes out of that. Still in discussion, but all really good news. So.
Great, thank you. Bob?
We had another wildfire JPA meeting. We have another one this week. I think we're going to be announcing executive director shortly. We had a fire council meeting. Everything's going great. Thanks.
Great, thank you. David?
Attended the, this Monday, the what we're calling the Central Marin Disaster Preparedness Committee instead of just Twin Cities because we have expanded activity somewhat. And once again, our chief and Todd Lando have made some great contributions and there are actually 1,200, I may be shortchanging the number of properties that have been fully inspected for and, and comments made and reports issued to homeowners with, that may need some additional work on clearing inappropriate species or hardening their homes. There's really a great deal that's going on on that front and very proud of it. Some work is also advancing in the area of steps, lanes and paths, particularly for evacuation routes. And I'm really happy to see that our own DPW is helping out with that maintenance work on some of the key pathways on Christmas Tree Hill.
Great, thank you. I attended the fire council meeting with Bob. I had a check-in phone call with our state senator, Mike McGuire, last week, just wanted to kind of touch base with him and see what his take is on, you know, a next tranche of relief funding for cities in California. He said, you know, basically we're just waiting on Congress at this point. I'll be checking in with Congressman Huffman on Friday, so we'll see if there's any signs of life there. I attended the League of California Cities Executive Committee meeting on Friday, September 4th. And I attended a CMSA meeting earlier this week. A little bit of exciting news there. Basically, the way the board is set up, it's two seats for San Rafael, two seats for Ross Valley Sanitary District and Corder Madera because Larkspur is gone. And so San Rafael holds the chair position right now and they had pretty adamantly wanted to maintain control of that chair position. And others of us on the board, myself included, felt strongly that it being a joint powers authority. You know, we need to put the J in joint and actually have that chairship rotate among the, among the member agencies. So it took some negotiations, but we got to the point where I'm now in line to, I'm the vice chair now and I'm in line to be chair next year. So that'll be some good representation for Corder Madera. And I have also secured Corder Madera a spot on CMSA's finance subcommittee, which we did not previously have. So I think it's just, you know, good, good reflection of it being truly a joint powers authority where Corder Madera has a full seat at the table and that is all I have to report. And with that, we will look at the draft agenda, item 8A. Does anybody have any comments on that agenda? If not, we can go ahead and adjourn the town council meeting and convene the sanitary district two meeting. So Corder Madera Town Council is adjourned, sanitary district two, September 15th meeting is convening. And Rebecca, can we have a roll call, please?
Board member Casissa?
Here.
Board member Lee?
Here.
Board member Ravazia?
Here.
Board vice president Keenheart?
Here.
President Beckman?
Here, thank you. I will wave the salute to the flag because we just did that for the town council meeting. Open time for public comment. Any members of the public who would like to comment on any item not on the agenda may do so. Members of the public will have three minutes each to comment. Please put your hand up via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmaile.org and we will start with Roy.
Okay, before I start, I just want to make a comment that I'm going to make some comments and observations and then Arlene will pick up and provide three questions. So here's my comments related to the sewer laterals. I've been a proponent of a public-private sewer lateral ownership program where the sanitary district owned and maintained the mains, the appurtenances, the Ys, the lower laterals and the property owners owned and maintained the upper laterals. Infrastructure replacements done on a wide area basis would have owners, would save homeowners from spending unnecessarily in an average of $800,000 per lateral replacement. This was the intent in 2005 by the sanitary district board ordinance 39, number 39. Over the past months, I've observed my neighbors sewer lateral replacement on Sea Wolf Passage. It costs roughly $10,000. The lateral was a single line run from the main to the cleanout outside of the house foundation. The Y needed replacing and consisted of five pieces along the sewer main. It was the left and the right of the sewer main, a centerpiece and two couplings. Another neighbor on Flying Cloud was notified about the lateral placement next year. They tried a number of times to speak to town staff, but the calls were not returned. They want to have the lateral replaced the same time as the main and the Y and the lower laterals are replaced. So they want their upper lateral replaced at the same time to save them money. I observed the lower laterals being replaced along Echo Avenue and Harvard Drive. I spoke with homeowners and the contractors foreman about the upper lateral replacements. The homeowners are not being notified about getting the upper laterals installed at the same time the lower laterals, which would save them thousands of dollars. The foreman indicated his company would be willing to contract with homeowners and replace the laterals along the same, at the same time the lower laterals are replaced. Also, I observed when the town undertakes the sewer main slash lateral work that the access hole and cleanout is installed on the house side of the sidewalk. This means the lateral will not be a single tube from the main to the cleanout, but a multiple piece. I spoke with the town staff, I sound staff member about these issues. On the upper lateral replacement, there is some investigation underway by sanitary district two for replacing yet the upper lateral at the same time the lower lateral replacement. And then my wife, Arlene, will take the three questions. So if you could switch over to her, appreciate it.
Sounds good. Thank you, Roy. We will get Arlene on here. And it's looking like Arlene is muted. So if you guys are able to unmute on your end.
Okay.
Great.
Okay. Yeah, I've, I got, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, number one, why is the town sanity district, sanitary district two not looking out for the property owners and developing the lowest cost solution for lateral replacement rather than a solution that is convenient and expedient for the town sanitary district two? What, question number two, why are the two, why are there two standards for the lateral replacements between sanitary district two and homeowners? Sanitary, sanitary district two uses multiple pieces, lower tubing, cleanout, with the homeowner providing the upper tubing for the lateral replacement, whereas the homeowner uses a single piece of tubing from the sewer main Y to outside the house foundation. Number three, what will happen when sanitary district two does a sewer main Y lower lateral replacement project where some homeowners have already replaced the lateral with a single tube? where some homeowners have already replaced the lateral with a single tube? Also, what happens with a multi-piece Y connector? That's all the questions.
Great. Thank you, Arlene. I do not have any other hands up right now. Rebecca, do we have any emailed public comment?
We did not receive any emailed public comment.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good questions raised there, and I, I think we can hopefully maybe have staff follow up offline about those items. We'll go ahead and close public comment now and bring it back to the board. Let's see. So that was open time for public comment. There are no presentations. That brings us to the consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not need to be discussed again. Any member of the public or council can pull an item from the consent calendar for further discussion. Would any members of the board like to pull an item from the consent calendar or staff? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and turn it over to the public. Would any members of the public like to comment on the consent calendar or pull an item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Move to approve for A and for B.
Second.
Great. Thank you. Rebecca, create a vote, please.
Board Member Casissa?
Yes.
Board Member Lee?
Yes.
Board Member Avasio?
Yes.
Board Vice President Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Board President Beckman?
Yes, thank you. There are no public hearings, which brings us to item six, business items. First is, or only one is 6A. Consideration of Resolution Number 62020, amending and approving a low-income grant assistance pilot program and approving a private sewer lateral loan pilot program.
Good evening, Board President and members of the board. I have a few slides to just touch on this subject. If I can share the screen here.
While you're doing that, would it make sense to take a motion to extend the meeting since we'll have to interrupt you in three minutes?
Sure.
Move that we, move that we extend the meeting until 10:00 PM.
Second.
Perfect.
Great. Thank you.
Can we just get a vote, please, Rebecca? Sorry, RJ.
Board President Casissa? Oh, sorry. Board, Board Member Casissa?
You jumped me up there. Yes.
Board Member Lee?
Yes.
Board Member Avasio?
Yes.
Board Vice President Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Rebecca. Already, RJ.
All right. Thank you. So the item before you today is to consider formally adopting a low-income grant assistance program. There are a couple amendments that I'll get to in this proposal, and as well as a private sewer lateral loan program. Before I get into the intricacies of these new tools in this pilot program, I thought I'd spend just a minute or two touching on kind of an overview of what's happened with our private sewer lateral ordinance, and also touch on just two of the pilot programs that were recently amended at, I believe it was a meeting in June or July. So back in June 2018, the board adopted a new private sewer lateral ordinance, and this created four triggers that require the homeowner or property owner to upgrade their private sewer lateral. You know, very simply, when a number of improvements were made to the home, when our property is bought or sold, when there is a sewer overflow, and when it's connected to a town or government-led capital improvement project. Most recently, these are the two programs that were brought before you for extension. We've, we've seen that they've been well received by the rate pairs, and they've also helped streamline the overall process with staff and overall. The improvements to the overall collection system have been very successful. Over 450 laterals have been upgraded since the private sewer lateral ordinance, and much of that is because of these tools that the board has moved forward with. So one is very simply a $1,500 contribution, and it really goes to serve just about any property owner that finds himself triggered to upgrade their private sewer lateral. Secondly, we have this lower lateral capital improvement program, pilot program, which is anytime the town is doing a town ladder, if there's a government agency, government-led CIP project, we will be doing the lower lateral, which is the portion from the district main to roughly behind the curb or behind the sidewalk, depending on the specifics at that site. So one of the new program, or one of the programs that has, was given to Direction. Direction. Sorry about the echo, by staff several years ago, and had been kind of moving along slightly informal, although, yeah, as mentioned, it had been blessed by this board, but not all the specifics had been adopted in a resolution. And so part of the action tonight is to formalize that. And also, I think there's at least some thoughts from staff to make the funding a little more accessible to those who need it most. Since this has been in, available, only six property owners in town have actually been able to tap into these funds. And so of those six, and based on the current program, matching percentages and maximum amounts available, the district has only contributed by $18,500, and that's over slightly over two, two years. Prior, we weren't sure exactly how many people would be using it, and so we created these tiers based on, you know, how much below your area median income, and that would help establish how much you could get and at what percentage. You know, I don't, I don't expect the number of eligible property owners to change significantly moving forward. And so one thought and would, would here to hear your thoughts and suggestions on this was to just simplify it and really just say, anyone that's considered low median income, and that's established by, by HUD and their, their tables and recommendations announced that they do, would receive 75% match, up to $10,000. If we were to apply those formulas to the work that's done to date over the last couple of years, I think that $18,500 number would still fall in the $40,000 to $50,000 range total, to give you a little food for thought. So that's one program that is before you today and open for discussion, but we think it's a good program. Secondly, you know, you know, I think the board agrees and staff sees it as a, as a good tool as well as, you know, we want people to have options to comply with our ordinance, and, you know, many people are triggered by this private sewer lateral ordinance, just aren't expecting it, whether they have an overflow or whether there's a CIP project, you know, they weren't, they weren't putting the money side, and maybe they also don't have the ability to obtain financing, and so that's a tough conversation. And so really, this program isn't to all of a sudden kind of turn into a bank and, and go around loaning, you know, all the property owners money to do their lateral, but really to serve those who just can't otherwise find the financial means to implement the required improvements, their private sewer lateral. So part of the, the spirit here, and again, open for conversation, is, is really to show that, you know, you were unable to obtain financing from a private institution. Really, this is the kind of last, last option here in order to comply with, with our private sewer lateral ordinance. So, and this is being used by several other agencies, Ross Valley, and I believe Los Galinas in Marin County, and some of the dollar thresholds in your term are actually consistent with theirs, where it's a $25,000 maximum loan and up to a 10-year term. I believe Ross Valley is using a 3.4% interest rate, and that's based on some of their rates they're paying, because they are actually borrowing money in their situation. But this is a tool that I see really come into play for neighborhoods that have long private sewer laterals. You know, more so than the one that is your, your kind of more typical subdivision or neighborhood here in Corder Madera. But, you know, perhaps when we get to, you know, the hills, and whether it's Chapman Park up in the hill, or whether it's Christmas Tree Hill, I expect there's going to be some longer laterals, you know, 100-plus feet, and there's going to be a more substantial cost. And we just want to make sure we have enough tools in our toolbox to help them comply. So that's the completion of the presentation, and from there, I'm happy to answer any questions and provide any clarification.
Great. Thank you, RJ. Charles?
Yeah, so with the loan program in particular, are you tying that to an individual property owner? Or is it tied to the actual service main? Because that, for me, it would make sense that the loan's tied to the main, so, because it's an improvement to the property, because if the property, you know, if they sell the property or whatever, then the loan carries with them. And the reason I say that is because ultimately, our ability to have the, it paid back, if it's tied as a service charge and actually wrapped up into the service charge, just, I'm just curious whether you thought about, you know, is it a separate loan service, or, I'm thinking like my cellphone, right? Like if I buy the cellphone, they just tack that on to the cell service fee, right, and you absorb it? You were talking about the percentage that we're charging, ultimately, what the 3% is versus, you know, some, some, to encourage people to do it and feel like it's correct, you know, doing no interest, as long as it's backed by something, or, you know, if it is that we have insurance and just basically liability costs that we want to cover for these, like, what would that percentage be? Is that what it's based on? Because you were saying if it's truly borrowed from another entity, that it would actually be higher for the institution, I guess. So that's, that's just what I'm looking for as far as clarification.
Are you, may I ask, may I ask, are you talking essentially about a, an equivalent of a PACE loan, a property assessed loan as opposed to a loan to an individual? Is that what you're saying? So it's?
Well, to me, it's also, it's based on the, yeah, to the sewer, like, it's tied to the actual service point to the meter and not to the individual.
But it would be paid through the tax, the real estate tax bill?
No. It would be paid, it would be paid through the sewer bill, right, which?
Which gets assessed through the tax bill?
It, yeah, I'm not sure of the exact semantics, but we have coordinated with the county of Marin. It would be added to the, their tax assessment for that, you know, that 10-year term or up to 10-year term. And it would essentially be automatic, and it would go, it would be a lien on the property. So should, you know, for whatever reason, they foreclosed or whatnot, it would, it would continue on with the next owner. And then to your question about rate, the, because one concern was that if we didn't have some, so for one, the interest would just provide a little bit of a kind of cover the costs that would go with the administrative work, but also, you know, there's, there's some savvy people in our, in our communities, and, you know, if we came out with a really attractive 1% rate, and then someone decides, oh, even though they have full means to it, they decide, oh, well, I'm gonna, no longer, I'm gonna get the loan from the districts, and I'm gonna use that to pay off my car loan, and then we start playing, you know, games where they're, they're just really not in need, but just kind of trying to shave a couple percentage points. And we really just wanted to focus on those that just really have no options.
That's another interesting issue with that that you brought up, though, is ultimately, how are we verifying the use of the funds, right? So, and, and basically, if under that loan program, could we actually implement the work service ourselves, or at least contract it out to make sure that they're getting good value on the money that we're loaning? It's just a question, not saying that that ultimately is, but if you thought about it.
Yeah, we would require more than one quote, and we would review them to make sure we think they're competitively priced. So that would be one mechanism. And then also, the way it's written, and again, this is a pilot program, so we'll see how it works out, is we would want a written statement from a financial institution saying they, they aren't able to qualify for an equivalent loan.
David?
RJ, on the grant program, does this align, the new proposal of 75% cost match up to 10K? Does this align with other communities around us?
Um, so it, it's, it's going to be slightly higher. And, and I think, so that, that's something to be aware of. I think, I think, I haven't checked the exact update on Ross Valley, but I think they're closer to 50%. So definitely something to consider. You know, part of this came about looking at the prior amounts established per year by the board, as well as some of the dialogue that occurred back when the private sewer lateral ordinance occurred, and there was just all big push to help those who need it. And so it was just, you know, kind of something that staff arrived at and wanted to bring forward, but certainly up for adjustment if you don't feel it's appropriate.
To that point, Mr. Vice Mayor, if I can, I just, we, we did staff, and I think RJ's done a really good job. We've kind of looked at all of the tools in the toolbox to help a community and to be really, to try to be as proactive as possible to help the community in taking all the good tools from all the member agencies. And I would argue, if you look at this program that's before you, it's probably the most complimentary to a, a community that you'll find comparing to any others. So it's, it's really thoughtful. I think it's within the, the direction that the council wanted. The interest rate was an interesting conversation, and again, we'll follow whatever direction you give. We're really not trying to make money at the expense of our residents, but there is an administrative fee, and these are public funds. And so we want to be thoughtful in any loan process that we do. We landed at 3% because that's where the county and others, that's where the rate appears to be right now. But again, if council wishes to lower that, we can, we're completely positioned to do so. And so, you know, we did have a pretty thoughtful conversation about it, but it's one that we were struggling with as well, so.
So my only thing is, could it be a variable rate based on like carrying costs at the time, right? Like, I know that's more difficult, but that would be the only way to make it truly like just cost.
Whatever we do, it's, you got to think of the administrative side, and it's already going to be administrative. We do not want, whatever we do, we want it to be pretty standard and as easy to administer as possible and fair. And so I would ask respectfully if we could just land somewhere and see how it goes. I do see this, we're going to continue to come back to you and have this conversation, because as you see, we're moving money around. We're going to want to continue to update you as a board to add monies, adjust monies as we go, and this is potentially one of those areas as well. So, but we do want to get, bring that to your attention, that this is one that we struggled with a little bit as well. What should we use as a rate?
And to add, to add one more point, so both of these new programs are through, are two, two-year pilot programs, and they align with the other pilot programs that were recently extended. So within two years from now, we'll be back and we'll be able to make any adjustments. Obviously, if there's adjustments that are needed prior to then, we'll be back sooner, but there will be another bite at the apple, so to speak, to make those necessary changes, and, and to approve any extensions, should we want to continue the program.
RJ, how many houses fall into the 80% or lower of AMI in Corder Madera?
You know, I don't have that metric. The one I do have is that of the, you know, slightly over two years, only six people have been able to tap into the program.
And that was out of how many PSLs upgraded?
Around 450 private sewer laterals that have been upgraded.
Okay, thank you. Fred?
Yeah, how much money are budgeted towards these programs? Do you know?
Yeah, let me pull some of that from the staff report, but in, in some years, the loan, or sorry, the low income were on the high side, $50,000 in several years individually. And like I said, we've only spent $18,500 over the course of its existence over, slightly over two years. And then, yeah, the other, the loan program itself is a new one that has not been in practice for sanitary district two.
Okay, and I'm sorry, the new program, the $25,000, that would apply just to low income, or is that applying to everybody?
No, the really, I think it, it applies to anyone who is unexpectedly required to upgrade their lateral, and those two conditions are the sewer overflow or the CIP project. And those two conditions are the sewer overflow or the CIP project. So if you're buying a home, there's somewhat of an expectation that you're going to have to do some upgrades. Likewise, if you're doing a remodel, there's some understanding that you might have to do some upgrades. That's where staff landed. Again, that's also up for discussion and modification if you wish.
Okay. But again, it applies to everybody under those two conditions. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for RJ before we open this up to public comment? If not, we'll go ahead and turn this over to the public. If you'd like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand through Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, did we get any emails on this?
No emails.
Okay. And we have no hands up, so we will close public comment and bring it back to the board for discussion and a possible motion. Who would like to start us off on the discussion of these programs? Bob?
Yeah, I've been to a lot of sewer lateral inspections as part of my job and I got to tell you, I have not seen one less than $10,000 in the last couple of years. I think this is a really, really much needed program. It will really be helpful for a lot of people in town. I actually just had an inspection in town last week and the cost of the super lateral replacement is $26,000. Someone's going to have to pick that up. So I think anything we can do to help people out in town, because a lot of seniors, you know, are trying to sell homes and they're having a hard time with this. This is something I think that we can really do to assist people. So I'm all for this. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Bob. Anyone else? I would say I completely agree. I think, you know, this is often a very large and unexpected expense for homeowners and, and while the town or SD2 doesn't have the money to just do them all for everybody, although we wish we did. I mean, and I think we would all love it personally too. Like my family's been trying to do a kitchen remodel that is going to cause us to have to redo our sewer lateral. So we would love, you know, if the town could just do it for us, but like SD2 just doesn't have that money. But I do think it is important that we do help homeowners to the greatest extent we can afford to. So I applaud staff in putting together this program. I think this is fantastic. And I really, I like how aggressively you stepped it up from our previous program. And I think it really speaks volumes to, you know, the way that you guys view your job, that you looked at the, the low level of participation that we were getting in the previous program and said, okay, how can we help more people then? How can we bump this up? So I support this strongly.
I'm very much in agreement with what you just said, Mr. Mayor. And I guess I'm wondering if there are additional efforts underway along the lines of the public comments of making sure that when we're in a street, we really are reaching out with these programs and reaching out in any way to try to lessen the overall cost of digging. RJ, is it?
Yeah, I was going to provide an update as part of the district manager update on some of those things.
Okay. David, was that comment inspired at all by, by the public comment we heard?
Yes, it was inspired by the public comment. Absolutely. And yes.
Yeah. Can, can you guys just look into that, please? And, and, you know, just make sure that, that nothing's fallen through the cracks there. Great. Thank you. Anybody else want to say anything? And if not, happy to entertain a motion to adopt resolution six 2020.
So moved.
Second. Great. Rebecca, can we have a vote, please?
Board member Casissa?
Yes.
Board member Lee?
Yes.
Board member Avazia?
Yes.
Board vice president Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Board president Beckman?
Yes, thank you. That concludes our business items. District manager reports. RJ?
Hey, yeah, just want to provide an update that we've got a 2020 sewer rehab project that started up in Marina Village. And it's where we're implementing the CIP lateral pilot program in many instances. Those residents received a letter months ago or some time ago, talking about the overall process in the project. And then also we'll be following up with a second letter that'll provide actually some, hopefully some competitive pricing from other contractors. And this is similar to what we did in Chapman Park. And so it was viewed as, I think, a successful project there and it allows the town project to move forward at the same time getting competitive pricing for the residents with actually a lot of the private sewer lateral contracts are different kind of size and, and more, you know, applicable to the upper lateral type work. So that, that's the way we designed it and we think they'll get good value moving forward. And then we just have another project on Trinidad and Sausalito pump stations that's about to kick off too. So excited about both of those.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there any board member reports? Are there any comments on the draft agenda for the next meeting? Then we adjourn. All right. Everybody, thank you all.
Night.
Good job.